Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, November 9th, 2016. The meeting is now called to order. If you haven't already done so, please take a moment to silence your devices. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair Badami?
Here. Would everyone please stand, and I see some of you are standing already, and please join Commissioner Hansen as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible]
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages your active participation in the public process with verbal and written comments. To speak on any item this evening, please complete a speaker's card located within the benches and follow the instructions on the back of the card. If you haven't already done so, please turn your card into staff. That way I can be prepared to call your name at the appropriate time. Matters or matters relating to agenda items will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Matters not on the agenda will be heard under verbal communications. We have desk items this evening for Items Number Two and Items Number Three. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence? Yes. Does anyone need more time? No. We do not have any requested continuances this evening, so I will move on to our subcommittee reports. And for the benefit of the public here, in addition to our service on the Planning Commission, members also serve on various town subcommittees. Do commissioners have any recent reports to share from committee meetings? Commissioner O'Donnell?
This afternoon, the Historical Preservation Committee met, and we had one matter on the agenda, and it was on University Avenue, 414, University Avenue. The house had been built in 1913, so the question was, would it be kept on the historical preservation rolls? And we explored the history of the house, the changes to the house, to determine whether or not there was significance there for historical purposes, and it was decided there was not. So the house was removed from the historical records.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Hansen?
The General Plan Committee, of which three planning commissioners are members, Commissioner Erickson, Commissioner Hudes, and myself, met on October 27th, and the purpose of the meeting was to go over potential amendments to the North Forty specific plan. We worked from the public comments, as well as the Town Council recommendations of potential changes that we might want to consider. And it was actually a fairly long list, so we did spend several hours and went through a lot of it, but we didn't finish. So we are going to be having another meeting, I believe it's on November 17th. And also, our new chair of the General Plan Committee is Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you. At this time, I invite comments from members of the public, and that would be to address us on any item not on tonight's agenda. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anybody would like to speak to us, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we will move to Item Number One, which is a consent item. That would be for approval of the minutes for the meeting dates of October 17th and October 26th of 2016. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Hudes?
Second.
Discussion. I was recused from Item Number Three, from the meeting date of October 26th. I viewed the hearing online, and I can attest to the accuracy of the minutes. Commissioner Birch?
I will not be voting, as I have not been able to read all of the notes and keep up with all of the meetings due to my illness.
You are excused. All right, I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passage unanimously. Commissioner Birch abstained. Our first public hearing is Item Number Two, which is 140, South Santa Cruz Ave, the Toll House Hotel, Conditional Use Permit Application U-16-005, requesting modification to an existing conditional use permit to allow entertainment before 10:00 p.m. on properties owned C-2 PD. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Any disclosures from commissioners? Ms. Sarnowitz, I understand you're providing us with the staff report this evening?
Yes, thank you. This item was before you in September as a CUP modification, and at that time, the commission made a recommendation or directed the applicant to conduct a noise study at the site to understand the implications of the request for entertainment. That has been conducted, that's in your staff report, and a further clarification in an addendum, which you also received. And so, this evening, we're asking that the commission consider the proposed modification in light of everything in the record, including the noise assessment. The applicant and also the noise consultant are here this evening also to answer questions. And then forward recommendations on to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarnowitz. Questions of staff? Vice Chair Kane?
I just want to clarify, on Page Three of the staff report, under recommendation Item Three, we are referred to Exhibit Three for the conditions, and I believe that that has been renewed or amended, and it is now Exhibit Twelve.
That's correct.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further questions? Seeing none, I will open the public testimony portion of the public hearing and allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to address the commission. If you could state your name and address at the podium?
Thanks. Hi, I'm Jim Gurney. I am the Regional Vice President and General Manager of the Toll House Hotel. Nice to see you all again, and I just want to say thank you for making us number one on the list. We were number seven last time, so. At our meeting on September 14th, we discussed many items regarding the conditional use permit of our hotel, and really, the behavior of our business since we purchased it in January of 2012. I really think that that was one of the prevailing discussions, but what really kind of rang home was that the community felt that in the years of 2008 to 2011, the conditional use interpretation had been abused, the sound ordinance had been abused, and therefore, there should be no flexibility in the moving forward of any type of discussion regarding our conditional use permit. Based upon the feedback that came at that meeting, and I see many of those people here, which is great, I mean, we want to be open to everybody, but I think that we were asked to do a couple things. We were asked to reach out to the community and make sure that everybody understood what our intentions were, and we were asked to conduct a scientific sound study. We did conduct that scientific sound study with Salter Associates. Alex Salter, one of the principals with Salter Associates, is here, and I'm going to ask when the time comes for him to come up and explain that sound study, because the way decibels move, the way they don't move, and the way they're interpreted is really kind of above my pay grade. So, I'm not going to really try and address that. What I really want to address is that, you know, our intent is to really move forward and create a level playing field with other businesses like ours in our community. I think that we are hampered by the inability to have live music outside. We have a courtyard we just spent $2 million on, and we do a lot of things out there, and they're quiet, and they're fine, and I get it, but having a reasonable accommodation that meets everybody else's business interpretation regarding sound and use is something that we're asking that you can center. You know, using the decibel testing on... Too far, huh? Sorry about that, thanks. I don't do this very often, by the way. So, when we did the decibel test in late September, one of the things that we realized was that the movement of decibels happened in different ways, depending on what position the sound was, where you were in location to the hotel, and I know that there are lots of opinions on that. And I think that the recommendation of this planning commission was to, let's put some science to opinion. We believe we did that. We believe that we're going to explain to you exactly what that science is, and there are still going to be opinions that differ with the science, and I know, I understand that. Our intent is not to create conflict with the community, is to create a level playing field. You know, whether it becomes an issue of whether we have live decibel meters in our place, we make reasonable accommodations, we make some concessions and compromises along, that's fine. I just believe that, and I'm just going to cite an example that happened on October 29th. I think you're all familiar with Nextdoor. We're on Nextdoor, and a Nextdoor email was blasted on the 29th that the Toll House was added again. About 20 emails later, we responded by saying, "The police are at the Toll House," and all is quiet. There is an impression that because we have a history of behavior prior to our purchasing the hotel, that we automatically become the culprit. On October 29th, we believe it was somebody else, and we believe we know who it was, but that's okay, it's not our problem. But, the reality is, is that the, you know, the subjectivity of our business as being an at-risk problem is not reasonable. I think everybody's come up and said, "Since 2012, when we purchased this hotel, we have done an admirable job of accommodating that conditional use permit and been completely adherent to it." So, you know, as we move into the sound study, what I'm hoping that we walk away from today, the original recommendation on September 14th was to approve to the Town Council that they approve this recommendation. We walked away with a postponement. I'm going to continue to press that, based upon what we've done, the behavior that we've demonstrated, the outreach we've done to the community, really suggests that they're our partners, and we're not intending to create a compromise. I can't argue with opinions, I can only argue with facts at this point. We have three and a half to four years of ownership of this property, we've had a great relationship, we've had no issues, we'd like to have a level playing field, we've done the homework, we've done the outreach. I believe that, based upon the information that exists in Los Gatos, we deserve the same fair shake as everybody else. I'd like to move on into the actual study that was done. Alex Salter, who's with Salter Associates, I believe he has his card up there, I'd like to bring him up. Sally, were you able to put this study on this? I would like to bring Alex, I'm going to talk specifically about what this study shows us and what it means, so that everybody can look at it and see it the same way.
Solid four minutes, my friend.
It's the PDF in the middle, just double-click it. There we go.
The best thing to do would probably be go to the last page with the map. So as Jim mentioned, in late September, we did a sound study at the hotel, where we simulated what an event would be like. They brought in some audio equipment into the courtyard, we set it up as it would be during a event, and we measured noise levels both in the courtyard and in the surrounding community. So this map, Figure One here, shows all the measurement locations. We have the hotel, which is hatched in the middle, C1, C2 being courtyard monitoring locations, and then all of the L locations in the surrounding community. So we simultaneously measured noise levels. We have both the source levels of the music that was generated in the courtyard, as well as receiving noise levels in the community. And what we did is, we found, you know, how does noise attenuate to these various locations? Because obviously, music noise will vary, there are certain conditions that can vary noise levels, but we want to know, how does the noise, what is the amount of noise reduction we get to each receiver, because that essentially remains constant. And the report essentially summarizes that attenuation in addition to the noise levels that we measured. We found that the Town of Los Gatos noise ordinance is essentially based on ambient noise levels that are established in the city's noise zone map, and there are allowable noise, or you are allowed to exceed that by a certain amount of about 5 dB. There's also a penalty for weekend noise, so it needs to be quieter on the weekends. We found that it would be achievable to meet this noise ordinance while having music in the courtyard. And, as Jim mentioned, I mean, they want to be upstanding citizens of the community. We've discussed monitoring during these events, so that they'll know what the noise level that they're generating is. We've established essentially limits in here based on our measurements of what they should be staying at, and so they'll be able to look at that, understand, are they getting close to the threshold because there's some louder music, or someone else turns it up, so they'll be able to monitor that and adjust as necessary. And I think that they've also been willing and obviously monitor resources like Nextdoor, that they receive some sort of information, that there'll be someone on site that is able to access that information and turn noise levels down, adjust as needed. And that's essentially the summary of what we did.
Would you like to talk a little bit longer? Is the time up, Joel? No? Time is not up. You still have time.
Okay. I think that's about it. You know, I'll take questions, I guess, later on, or if anyone wants to clarify anything.
I'll start with Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm looking at your report dated for October, I guess, to which this may be attached, and on Page Two of that, you put the measured entertainment noise at nearby receiver locations, and three of those noise levels in the third column to the right, are you there yet? I don't want to go too... Pardon me? Yeah, well, we've all got this, but do you have it before you?
Yeah, I have it in front of me.
Okay. Perhaps if we could show that, other people could see it too, so. But anyway, while she's doing that, I'll just ask, my questions are simple. The locations L1 shows a 53 dBA, L5 shows a 54, L7 a 57, and L8. Now, I picked out those because, if I understand it correctly, if you turn the page to Page Three, it says in the second paragraph, "However, with the subtraction of 5 dB for weekends and holidays, events occurring from 1:00 to 10:00 on weekends and holidays should operate at a maximum level of 69 for the C1, blah, blah, blah." It looks like, maybe I'm misreading this, so you're indicating the maximum level at what time? At 1:00 to 10:00 p.m. is 69, but do you subtract 5 from that, or is that with the 5 subtracted?
Yeah, so this table is essentially without, is what we measure, and so, you see the courtyard noise level in the first column, receiver noise level, second column. Essentially, all of these measurements had met the noise ordinance for the 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., essentially weekday condition. But, you are correct that there are some that are above the weekend, which is why in Page, on Page Three, that paragraph that you cited has a lower maximum noise level of 69. So, that would essentially bring those noise levels down within that 5 dB penalty, because if you notice, the 57 or the 61, those source noise levels are 72 and 73, so it's currently operating at a higher level than what it should otherwise be on a weekend condition.
Vice Chair Kane?
Can we make that bigger? Can you all see those numbers? Can you, can we enlarge that?
It's not possible to enlarge it.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I was distracted, I guess, too, by that, but could you go over that with me again? You're saying that some of the numbers are above the weekend code, or not?
Yes. So, this was, the measurements, the measurements were done at a set noise level, and then we essentially measured at the various receiver locations. There were some adjustments made at certain times, and that's why we documented the courtyard noise, so our source noise level. This table, more than anything, is indicating the attenuation between the courtyard, the hotel source essentially, and the receiver locations.
That's Table Two, or Table?
Table Two.
Two, okay.
So, if you look at the courtyard noise, let's look at Column One. Let's look at L8, the highest noise level. That's 73 dB. That receiver noise level is 61, so we'll keep, let's keep in that one it being a worst case essentially. So, that receiver noise level is 61. If we go back to Table One on the first page, these are the noise zone limits, allowable weekday noise, 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., your allowable weekday noise is 62. So, we're currently okay at 62, or at 61, at that location, for weekday, and that's a source noise level of 73. If we were then to take that condition and bring it to a weekend, we would then need to be at 57, that third column in Table One. So that's a difference of 5 dB. We're at 61 right now, so we need 4 dB of noise reduction. Go back to the source noise level of 73, we need to be at 69 in order to meet that weekend noise level. That is what we have cited on Page Three as the maximum noise level that can be generated.
Commissioner Birch?
I'm not finished. Could I just finish this?
Yes.
Maybe I missed it, but what is being proposed to reduce it to the level it has to reach?
We're essentially saying that the hotel is going to monitor the noise levels that they are producing and limit the noise levels via a volume control.
So this assumes that whatever noise, let's call it music, whatever music they have is going to be artificial, i.e. not a band, something you can turn the volume down?
That, yes, that is my understanding.
So, so if they have a band, then all bets are off?
I mean, the study here was based on amplified music only, not live music.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't understand quite how you control sound unless it's with a dial, and if it's with a dial, it's not a band.
Correct, that is how it would be done.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Birch? My question somewhat had to do with what Commissioner O'Donnell was just speaking about. What I would like to clarify is, there's obviously different forms of music that can be played, and that I would assume that you would do. Most types of music have some level of amplification, even an acoustical guitarist is going to have a microphone. Is my understanding that you will have a monitor, reading real-time dBA, that if you walk out and you see it's between 1 and 10, and it has gone up a couple, that will be immediately adjusted? Is that my, am I understanding that correctly? Because I do understand you couldn't just turn the music up and down all over the place to do this. You had a baseline sound study that you did, which makes perfect sense. I just want to confirm for those in the audience that there will be real-time monitoring with someone making adjustments as needed.
Thank you. Yes, I will absolutely confirm that, and I also like to kind of adjust the question that Commissioner O'Donnell asked, is that we, you know, live music doesn't necessarily mean it is a rock and roll band. It could be a three-piece jazz ensemble that, but all live music is also adjustable from a sound level, based upon the way it's amplified. So, if we're doing non-amplified music, it'll have a certain level, but we also understand that there are levels of amplification that reach thresholds at our hotel that create problems outside of our hotel that we cannot exceed. That 69 and 70, or the numbers you just quoted, we know what those numbers are. Those numbers are, we are fully committed to managing to those numbers to ensure that the noise within our property does not become problematic within the thresholds of the town's limits.
I'm concerned again about...
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm concerned again about control of non-artificial sound, because I've put on a couple weddings for daughters, and you always tell the bands to be quiet, and they never are. How do you control this, the sound of a, you know, it's all well and good if you've got a couple violins there, but you probably won't have a couple of violins. How do you control the sound of a band?
Well, you can amplify or unamplify it. I mean, bands do have volume controls on their amplifiers.
Let's assume you have no amplification, and you have a five-piece band, not playing rock and roll, but playing danceable music, and, you know, danceable music is all of a lot, you're telling me that without amplification, it's going to be okay?
Well, I'm telling you, without amplification, if it exceeds 69 decibels, we're not going to be able to put it outdoors.
Okay, so that means you just shut down the band?
Well, we're going to know. We're going to have theoretical types of music that are going to meet or not meet the expectation of accommodating the provisions within the ordinance. And if a live band is subject to be at risk to be higher than the 69, we're not going, we've got four years of absolutely demonstrating that we're on board. This is not something we're going to say, "Oh, by the way, when this thing..." And I think that's part of the fear, is the day that the lights go out, the lights go out. We're here to tell you that we've got four years of accommodation and cooperation.
Do you, do you plan on having an employee that's dedicated to the noise monitoring, or will it be a bartender, or a hostess, or a manager that's busy doing other things?
Great question. Absolutely not. We actually have a manager that's on duty every single weekend overnight, that is not specified to be doing any job other than accommodating the global needs of the hotel in absence of the general manager. As the Regional Vice President and General Manager, I'm very often absent from the property, which is why we have a hotel manager, and in his absence on the weekends, we actually have what we call a manager on duty. Their job is not to do their normal job, but to be about the property, to make sure the accommodations of our customers and our business is accommodated. So, we have somebody, obviously, every manager that we've had and have on board was part of the sound study, participated in the kind of going through and walking through this. We really wanted to make this a holistic experience, so that as people move forward, we were doing this, we're doing this right. I don't want to do it wrong.
Vice Chair Kane, followed by Commissioner Hudes.
Let me see if I understand the mechanics. You've picked 10 locations to do the study, and those were residences, L1 through L10?
They were all residences with the exception of there, some of them were the perimeters of our property, so that we could show as it reached to the...
So one of them, one or more of them indeed was a residence?
Eight of them were residences.
And let's say that L5 was a residence, and let's say that that represented number 8522 Broadway, and that's how you got your data from a receiver at that location. Will that receiver be permanent at that location?
No, we are not...
How would I know then in the future what the DBs are coming to that location?
Alex addressed that, but generally speaking, is that the noise traveling from the courtyard will have the exact same amount of ambient sound at that location as it did during the test, so the variation should be the same.
So it'll be an assumption, perhaps a valid assumption, that if the generation is at X, which is what it was at this study, then the reception should be Y. That's the presumption. What's the practicality or feasibility of leaving some of these receivers in place?
You know, we'll consider anything. Leaving receivers...
That's good. You'll consider it. I don't even know if it's practical, but when you take them out, I'm thinking, how do you know what's landing there if they're not there? That's good, you'll consider it.
Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. I understand how you've done this study and how you're going to map the study to operations. It makes sense to me. I have a question about the study itself, though, and the locations. I'm looking at, this potentially for the sound engineer, I'm looking at locations L1 and L8 on the map, and it looks to me like location L1 is about one-eighth of the distance then from the courtyard, as is L8. And yet, the, I would expect to see a lower level or more attenuation at L8, considerably more than at L1. Why, why is it going the other direction?
Sure, that's a good question. So, it's really the site topography. It's really the site topography. So, L8, it slopes up a hill here, so we're actually overlooking the hotel and overlooking the courtyard. I don't think, I don't believe we have direct line of sight. However, L1 being at essentially the same level as the hotel, you've got the structure itself that is shielding the courtyard noise levels, hence the lower noise level.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Is it, is it common to see, you know, eight times the distance and the sound level actually increasing over that distance in that amount?
Yes, I mean, it all has to do with exposure, so you'll have the distance you are from a receiver, but then also... So, you'll have the distance you are from a receiver, but then also what's blocking it in your way. So, if you have, you can be closer technically to a noise source as the crow flies, but if you have a big wall in your way, you would be, you know, ostensibly exposed to lower noise levels than if you had no wall and were considerably farther.
Okay, so, if you look at L eight, there's another building just to the right of that. It looks like it's part of that same property. So, that's closer. What, did you take a measurement there, and is that a residence? And I wasn't able to access that particular location.
I believe it's part of the senior community that's up on the hill. We did not do a measurement there specifically. A lot of it is, we're restricted to areas we can access, someplace that has a structure or tree or something that we can hang a monitor on, so.
So?
That was actually a residence that volunteered to use their residence as a sound study.
Oh, I'm talking about the building just to the right of L eight.
We asked if we could have access to over there for, from the meadows, and only the residents in location of L eight provided us access for the sound.
Okay, so, question for the sound engineer. Do you expect to be the sound, the sound level to be louder at that building that is to the right of L eight?
I don't believe so, mainly because, and if I can walk up here, because it's easier. If I can take it? Okay. This being the courtyard here, and then the two buildings essentially meet, so we've kind of got an area in here where you've got more noise kind of coming through because you don't have as much of the structure. If we were to put a monitor over here, we'd probably be blocked a little bit more by this structure. So, you know, I think this is essentially a worst-case line of sight down to the courtyard area.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I had a question about the attenuation. You said it means relatively constant, so if we measured it a month from now or two months from now, from any given location to the courtyard locations, the sound level should be the same?
Yes, they should be very similar. I won't say that they'll be exactly the same. There are certain, you know, wind can affect noise to a certain extent. It's, the effects that wind can have is more over longer distances, so closer in, it's not going to be as pronounced, it probably won't be that significant, but, you know, it will certainly vary somewhat. Temperature affects noise, but it's on a much, much smaller scale than what we're talking about in terms of distance and shielding and what your exposure actually is.
Well, getting back to the question about L eight, because it was one of the loudest noise levels in your study. So, you're saying because it's relatively close to the hotel, that the noise level shouldn't, the attenuation shouldn't vary as much over, in different conditions?
From a day-to-day point of view, at that, we're just talking about the courtyard to L eight?
Yeah, because this whole thing basically is based off of the noise level that would not cause the variance from the minimum that the town requires, and that location was the one that would be in violation under the current conditions. So, if anything changed to the negative, then it would be more of an issue.
I'm not sure I completely understand, but yes, I mean, that is sort of our, the worst case that were, that essentially sets the maximum noise level because it is where we measured the highest received noise level. The, you know, the attenuation part of it, you know, where we have twelve dB of noise reduction, which is the lowest amount of noise reduction from source to receiver, that should stay pretty much the same on a day-to-day basis. It won't be exact. Some days it may be thirteen, it could be fourteen, it could be eleven, but it's not going to be like all of a sudden, we're going to have eighteen dB noise reduction or five dB of noise reduction. And to give you a little bit better sense of the change in decibels, you generally won't be able to notice a change in noise levels until it actually changes more than three dB. Generally, the human ear can't detect a change of one or two. It's really, that's, that's something that needs to be measured in a laboratory with a sound level meter for it to be, you know, something that is noticeable.
Okay, so, just because I may have not have explained what I was asking, I think you answered my question, but the L eight was at sixty-one dB, and then the requirement from 1:00 to 10:00 p.m. is seventy-four or sixty-nine, right?
The requirement.
Or, and then from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., it's seventy and sixty-five. So, that's all I was saying is because, because L eight was closest to that, if there was any difference in attenuation, then we would just want to know how much of an adjustment they need to make. But you don't have to answer that part, I'm just, was trying to understand how it worked.
Got it.
And I think you answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you for being here. We have all these questions. You used C one and C two on the property, right? And you did that to get the difference in sound depending where you located it, with the idea of being at some point, assuming this would get approved, you would have a monitor either at C one or C two. Is that correct?
Yes.
And your measurements then taken from C one and/or C two, and following up on the last question about L eight, to the extent that it is higher than the weekend permitted, and therefore would have to be reduced, as I recall, is that correct?
The, the maximum noise level, right, that varies based on a weekday and a weekend.
Right, and it's how many, what was, three or four DBA higher than the town?
Four DBA.
So, I guess what I'm wondering is if I'm the property manager or something, I wander out and look at the dial, let's say C two, what am I looking for? What should I see there so I'd be comfortable that L eight is going to be compliant with the town's ordinance?
So, that would be on the third page where we have seventy-four DBA at the C one meter location, that's the very first sentence. And then in parentheses, we have what the equivalent would be at C two, which is eighty-two. Because there is essentially an eight dB difference between the C one and C two locations, and that's due to, at C two, you're closer to the speakers essentially to the, where the noise is.
Sure, you're, and maybe I'm not understanding, so that's why I want to repeat it. If, for example, on the 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., my reading on the weekend were sixty-nine or below, then that, that should be compliant on all of the off-site?
Correct. At the, if you're reading sixty-nine at the C one location.
And how close is that figure? In other words, you said you can't, the human ear can't pick up two or three decibels. And if the week, if the weekend holiday noise is sixty-nine, and, okay, so, is that a number then that if I went out and looked at the meter some evening, seven, nine o'clock, whatever, on a weekend, if it's sixty-nine or below, I can feel comfortable that all these off-site locations are going to be compliant?
Yes, based on our study, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Kane.
I've driven up to the meadows from time to time, and in going up Wood Road and winding around and getting up there, I always felt I was halfway to Saratoga, but in looking at your aerial, the hotel is just a stone's throw away. So, my question for management, Mr. Gurney, is you mentioned four years. Now, that means your shift, four years?
Personal.
Okay. In those four years, have you ever gotten a complaint from the folks at the meadows?
I have not, I'm not going to say absolutely we have not, but I am not aware of any.
I'm just thinking they'd have a high sensitivity to sound.
Yes.
Retirement, community, medical, service.
And if I just may add, that because they are such close neighbors, that we are very actively involved with them on a day-to-day basis. We have many business partnerships with them on different levels other than entertainment.
You held that, second question, if I may?
Yes.
You held an outreach program on October sixth?
Yeah.
And you sent notices out RSVP. How many people attended from the neighborhood?
We had close to two hundred people attend. I'm going to guess that not a lot from the neighborhood attended. Some from the meadows, some from the neighborhood. We've, we pretty much invited anybody that was in our zip code, just to try and flood the entire environment, so.
But you had an RSVP on it.
Yeah.
Did you look at the addresses to see how many were Broadway?
I will defer, just give me a moment on that. I'm not sure that we had anybody attend. I can't guarantee that we did.
Okay.
We had plenty attend when we did the sound test, though.
Thank you.
Further questions? Commissioner Hanson?
I, I heard loud and clear that you're more than willing to have a sound monitor. However, I didn't see it in our terms and conditions, so if we were to ask that be part of the COP that you have a sound monitor as part of this changing of the COP conditions, is that agreeable to you?
Commissioner Hanson, I would just like to interject that it is one of the conditions in Exhibit twelve.
I looked at it, and maybe I didn't look at the right number, so.
Yeah, if you take a look at Exhibit twelve, there was additional language added relating to a monitor.
Okay, thanks. Further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will now invite comments from members of the public. Our first speaker will be Larry Lenhart.
Hello, I'm Larry Lenhart. I live on thirty Broadway in Los Gatos, California. I know that the conversations around a decimal here, a decimal there are interesting. Mathematically, that very makes very little difference when you think about, as you mentioned, a party, music outside, a loud voice trying to go above that sound will make an enormous amount of difference. And if you look at this facility, it's not competitive with any other facility in Los Gatos. So, level playing field, this is the only facility in Los Gatos with an outdoor, open environment surrounded by concrete that has open sides on each end. This right here is a sound machine. There's a reason why years and years and years ago, the town council said, we cannot afford to let the retirement communities, we can't afford to let the retirement communities in L eight, we can't afford all of these folks that live right next to this sound machine to be enduring the sound again and again and again. We talked to the town council, who actually created the COP many, many years ago, and that was their, their perspective. So, the simple way to manage that process is to maintain the COP. As far as the interactions, I think you guys had both meant, the committee had asked two things, one, the sound study, and two, outreach to the, to the community. We mentioned a couple of things. One, we did get two outreaches from the Toll House. One was an invitation kind of posthaste to the Jazz and Plaz, kind of the drink fest activity, which the folks on Broadway, we didn't, we kind of got it late, didn't go. The second, I think there was an email or a letter that was left, that was sent by snail mail, asking if we could use your property to do, to do the sound test. There was no other interaction. There wasn't any conversations with the, with the street, there wasn't any, hey, this is what we'd like to do, is that good, is that bad? Great example, number one, Broadway has been terrific with the street. They've come out, they've met with us, they've walked up and down the streets when there's noise, they've learned how to shut it, they've been terrific. With the Toll House, there's been zero. Matter of fact, I had a conversation with the town attorney a few weeks ago, we talked about the COP and what likely is a violation of the current COP. And Mr. Schultz asked, he said, look, I think they would like to talk to you, is it okay if I share your contact information? I sent them all my contact information, never heard nothing. So, there's a little challenge there from historically managing the details of a decimal level, that the town council said that's impossible. So, let's put the COP in place, and second, we've really had no interaction with the town. Even you guys have asked them to do that, there's been little to no interaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lenhart. I have a question for you from Vice Chair Kane.
Was your residence one of the L one through tens?
No, it was not. We didn't, we did not receive any.
But you received that?
We did, you know.
You said you received a letter?
A number of my people on Broadway did receive a letter.
But you did not?
We did not.
Okay. Did you attend the October sixth function?
No, as I mentioned, it was a, it was a function for Jazz and the Plaz, and really it was a drinking opportunity for all the folks in the local community. I don't think, very few people from Broadway went, maybe two or three people might have gone.
Mr. Lenhart, your address is thirty Broadway, so can you tell us how far up the street you are from the hotel?
I'll point it to you, and I'll come right back.
Okay.
So, we're located right here, okay? And this right here is an open wall. So, this actually becomes a sound cannon that shoots the sound this way.
If you're going to talk to us, you've got to get the mic.
Okay, I get so excited up there. So, there's an open wall on the right side, which I think the, the sound person had highlighted, that that lets the sound escape pretty dramatically. So, it goes shooting through that alley and right up into our house, and obviously, the other open area is right up into the, into the retirement community.
Thank you. Any further questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lori Forzier.
Hi, my name is Lori Forzier. Thank you for allowing us an opportunity to speak. I'm here with my husband Brad, and we live at forty-five Broadway, which is represented by L three on your diagram. And I guess there's two points I'd like the commission to consider. One, I look at the level of outreach and communication over these past few months as a good predictor of what our relationship will be like going forward with the Toll House. And I liked what Michael Kane said in our last meeting, that you should listen to your neighbors, and we should work together. And out of that, we did get the sound study. We did get a letter announcing the sound study. The event on October sixth was at a party that had been planned at the Toll House that we were invited to attend, but it was no way an event specifically around this request from the Toll House. Tonight is the first time I'm seeing the results of this study. Nothing has been shared with me. It would have been an opportunity for the neighborhood to get together, to talk about what the results were, what they mean, how they would like to enforce and make sure that these decibels were being met for our neighborhood. And none of that communication has happened. And based on what I'm seeing tonight for the first time, I have new questions about decimal ratings being higher on weekdays versus weekends, which leads me to my second area of thought that I'd like you to consider. We have three small children, a ten-year-old, a three-year-old, and a one-year-old, children with eight o'clock bedtimes, children with homework. This backyard is attached to our kitchen and our family room. When we did do the sound study, there was two elements that the sound expert mentioned could impact noise, temperature and wind. It was one of the warmest nights in September with very little wind. And having lived in this neighborhood for three years, I know there's a difference between the offshore and the onshore wind and what that means just from the sound of the freeway. It was an extremely quiet night, and when we asked if there would be a second data point that was more reflective of an average evening on our street, we would, we were informed that there would not be because it was cost prohibitive, which I appreciate that there, we don't want to put an undue burden there, but I think that's a realistic concern for us in terms of what does this sound study really represent in terms of what it's truly like in our neighborhood most of the time? Most evenings aren't super hot, sunny evenings. And again, consider the fact that we have children, the fact that the decimal ratings are higher on weekdays when I need to put them to bed and have homework is of concern for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Question from Vice Chair Kane.
When you say that tonight's the first time you're hearing about the decibels, my question is, prior to tonight, did you have access to the numbers on the study? Was it sent to you or offered to you?
No.
Were you told where you could find it?
No.
My second question is, tonight, are you provided with the study? Was it in the packets that were out on the table?
There's some details around the agenda, but there is no, all of the things that were presented on the screen, we were seeing for the first time on the screen. I didn't see any pamphlets handed out or available outside when I came in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Tom Richards.
Hi, I'm Tom Richards. I live at sixty-two Broadway. I'm right around L ten-ish, I think, on, on this map, but again, I haven't seen it before, and I don't really look at our neighborhood from this angle very often, so it's hard for me to place it. I just wanted to mirror a lot of the points that were made. Nobody's reached out to me or my wife. We have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter. I would have loved to know what the decibels are that they're trying to produce, what they think those are. There was a bit of hand-waving, I think, in terms of what decibels are. I'd like to see somebody install a knob to turn down drums. I think that's pretty hard to do, though. Drums are pretty loud things, people talking over drums, those get very loud quickly. I think my wife and I are both concerned about the effect of loud noises on our child getting her to bed. She goes to bed at 7:30, that's well before this time. And so, that's just what I wanted to, to say to support the rest of the people here, and I share. I share their opinions as well.
Sir, thank you. Do you still have time remaining, if you like?
No, I'm good. Thanks. Yeah, there you go.
Vice Chair Kane.
Same questions. Did you get the letter about the receivers?
I haven't received anything in writing. Nobody's come and spoken to my wife or I at our house.
So you didn't know about the receivers?
Never seen these people before in my life. I've never seen these people before in my life.
Not the people, but did you get the letter about the receivers, the sound study that was going to be done?
I don't believe so.
All right. Did you attend the October 6 thing?
I did not.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Gail Randolph.
Hello, Gail Randolph. Is that a good level? Live at 42 Broadway since 1975. The suggested changes are what I thought I would talk about, and why not to change the CUP. The CUP is, the suggested changes in the CUP are inappropriate. Use of the property was well thought out with foresight and settled by conscientious citizens, just like all of us, over 20 years ago, and nothing has really changed in the neighborhood. There is a lack of trust that they keep their word on anything. This is not only because of action by previous ownership, but this owner, too. That they haven't abided by their CUP right now is my proof that they are not trustworthy. I gave permission to study sound on my property, and to my knowledge, they did not. I was available and on the street at the time. I talked with neighbors. I sat on my steps with my iPhone decibel meter. And between 7:00 and 7:30, no one came by to interact or test. And by the way, I could hear the music a little bit, though faintly. The June party was not just for Broadway to reach out, but for Jazz on the Plaz. Jason was going to announce the findings for this sound study if they were available. So I contacted him to let him know that I didn't drink, and I don't have a 1920s outfit. But if business is going to be mixed in with his pleasure, I would be there. By the way, I just learned about the sound study results from exhibits attached to the agenda online. And my other thing is that businesses escalate. They're proposed in their most modest form. Let's take a family restaurant nearby as an example. Great, nice, welcomed. But then, a request comes from customers after a while that they need to have beer and wine served with their food. Okay, that happens. Then, a few years later, it's trendy to have drinks and hard liquor and cocktails. So they added that. Then they built a bigger bar, really beautiful bar, and added bar furniture. And then, they renovated the whole interior. Oh, darn.
You've got 30 seconds.
Okay.
Keep going.
Thanks, I can do it. They renovated the interior, so now, if you just remove the table and chairs from this space, you would have a perfect nightclub setting. In fact, if you look on their website, it states, "If Los Gatos had a clubhouse, this would be it." These are the kind of baby steps that I see, and I've been there a long time. So I don't expect anything different from the Toll House.
Thank you, Ms. Randolph. Do we have questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our last speaker card is Michael Verga.
Hi, my name's Mike Verga. I'm at 46 Broadway Avenue. It's kind of hard to read there, but all the residents in the green area are residents that I've walked to their houses, spoke with them, and they are in agreement that we do not want that CUP changed. So you can see they're surrounding pretty much that pink area where the Toll House is. The Toll House just told you that they were in compliance with their CUP. They are not in compliance with their CUP. They're not in compliance with the seating restrictions, and they're not in compliance with no banquets, receptions, and conferences. My wife and I did our homework. We contacted the three former council members that implemented the CUP, Randy Adaway, Joanne Benjamin, and Steve Blanton, and they were in disbelief that the planning department is ignoring their hard work. Steve Blanton was very clear, there was no way that the Toll House and the restaurant would be separated. They were and are one entity. It makes no sense that they would separate the two, and they didn't. So what has happened is, we have a planning department that's playing word games with both you and us as the residents, and it means that they're not being neutral in their administration of this CUP. And because of that, the Toll House is ignoring their own CUP. And what's the end result? The end result is that we, as residents, have a problem with, we don't trust that the planning department is looking out for our best interests. They seem to be looking out for the Toll House's best interest. And because of that, the Toll House has done zero outreach, as has been indicated by the residents. They did not come and sit down with us. They did not listen to our concerns. There is room for negotiation, but it would require us to trust them and for them to come to us and say, "Would you like to work with us? Is there something we can work out?" That would be possible. But it's not possible when you don't trust the people that you're supposed to be negotiating with, and you feel like they're trying to railroad their own agenda without listening to what our concerns are as residents. A one-time test that the Toll House conducted one evening does not take in consideration weather, humidity, wind, all the changes of outdoor sound. The sound test was conducted with nobody in the courtyard. You think if you add 100 to 200 people in the courtyard that that's not going to change things? Of course it's going to change things. You're going to have to turn up the volume so the people in the courtyard can hear, whether it's amplified music, whether it's a band, whatever it may be. I don't believe the planning department is looking out for our best interests, is being neutral. I don't think they're being neutral. The Toll House is not looking out for our best interests, and we're asking you to look out for our interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verga. Any questions? Seeing none, I do have one more speaker card, and that would be from Gillian Verga.
Hello again. My name is Gillian Verga, and I live at 46 Broadway. Since we met two months ago, essentially, nothing has changed. Yes, a sound test was done, but I think we've talked a lot about whether those results are really reliable. No outreach was done from the Toll House to the neighbors. The same neighbors who opposed the CUP change before still oppose it now, and the Toll House is still violating their CUP terms by holding events in their patio on a regular basis. The two documents included in the report to the Planning Commission as evidence of outreach are laughable. Outreach is a two-way dialogue, not a letter and an invitation to a party. I had hoped and expected that there would be a meeting between the Toll House and the neighbors where the neighbors could share their concerns, and the Toll House would listen to them and respond. I had hoped and expected that the results of the sound study would be explained to the neighbors prior to tonight's meeting with an opportunity to raise questions and concerns. I had hoped and expected that any additional provisions to the CUP change would have been discussed with the neighbors, and we could have some say in whether they address our concerns. I had hoped that if our discussions with the Toll House were not productive, that perhaps a neutral party would be able to help us negotiate some kind of compromise between the two parties. Since none of these things has happened, I'm exactly where I was two months ago. With respect to the CUP change, I recommend that the change be denied, and the Toll House remain allowed to have entertainment indoors only. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Verga. Commissioner Hudes.
Hi, thank you. With regard to the events that are occurring that you're aware of--
Yes.
Do they involve music or loud sound?
I believe that they have been adhering to the lack of amplified music in the courtyard. But they are having larger seating for more than 36 people, and they are having receptions and banquets in the courtyard, which is specifically denied by the CUP.
Okay, thank you.
Have you made complaints to the planning department that perhaps a code enforcement officer can investigate the complaints?
No, I have not.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kane.
I just want to ask the same questions I asked before. Did you or your husband receive written notification from the Toll House regarding the sound study?
Yes, we received the letter, and I emailed Jason and said he could use my house as part of the sound study.
And did they?
And they did. And in fact, our house was the location for the ambient sound meter.
Second question. Were you able to attend the October 6th function?
Yes, I did. I went to it. It was, as everyone here has mentioned, it was a party for Jazz on the Plaz. There were maybe a couple hundred people there. I don't really know, I'm not good at counting. But it was a party. The sound study results were posted on a board in the corner. I actually had a conversation with someone there about how the decibel numbers that are listed on the chart are lower than a regular conversation. And we pulled out our phones and our sound meters and spoke into that, and it got 85 decibels. So I don't really understand how it all works. There was certainly no discussion at that event about the issues between, around the CUP change. And in fact, I think it would have been really inappropriate to try to bring that up in a party like that.
I'm not saying it's your responsibility. I'm just wondering if you or any of the neighbors you know ever requested a meeting with the Toll House to--
I have had a couple of conversations with Jason, and I told him that I could not represent the neighborhood myself personally, because he would say things to me like, you know, "Our intention is not to bother the neighbors, and our intention is to keep the noise quiet." And I said, "You know, you need to talk to the neighbors as a group. You should not, you cannot assume that I'm going to pass that information on to the neighbors. It's not my place to do so." And I recommended to him that he reach out to everyone who spoke at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, that was our last speaker card, so thank you very much. One more. Rod Teague.
I don't know why I feel compelled to speak tonight on this subject, but I live in Los Gatos. I'm a musician, and I've been playing music in Los Gatos for about 15 years. And I do empathize with the residents. I used to play at Toll House. I play Spanish guitar, I play flamenco-style guitar. So I've played diodeca, I still play a Testarossa, Wine Cellar, list goes on. And I do notice there's always a trend that happens, is that percussion, as much as I love music and I love percussion, causes problems with residents and neighbors. And when you have cymbals and loud drums, you tend to get lots more complaints. And I guess what I'm trying to get to is, you know, don't throw the baby out with a bathwater. There's, you know, hopefully, solutions that work for the residents as well as our businesses, which, you know, we want to prosper. And I can imagine if we threw out all CUPs, because obviously, that's there for a reason. But I just hope that you would, you know, consider other things in the ordinance that maybe exclude things like loud cymbals or large drum kits. And oftentimes, that does the job, because I've played at several venues between, especially here and Saratoga, that have banned their music because of, and it comes down to the drum kits, or a DJ comes in with really loud music. So anyhow, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have a question for you. So Old Town has a CUP that allows unamplified background music. There shall be no amplified electric or percussion music. Is that something that you can see for the courtyard area of the Toll House, based on your testimony?
I mean, absolutely. I think you can play, if you want to have a loud, I've been to the Toll House when there was large groups playing with heavy percussion, and, you know, it weighed on me that neighbors are probably going to get tired of this real quickly. And, you know, there is a solution in between there where you could eliminate that. And, you know, acoustically is difficult, because, you know, for me, by rule of thumb, once you're playing and you get into a crowd of 15, 20 people, it diffuses the music to where you almost can't hear it. So you do need amplification. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. So you are saying it needs amplification?
Well, it does, yeah. I think you do in that type of space. But I think there's ways to do it that are still, you know, has that musical vibe and draws people, without tipping the scale and creating a problem. And usually, the core of that problem, from my experience, has always comes with a big, heavy drum kit. You know, you could play percussion on hand, you could play timbales, or you can play a doomback or something. It has nice, light percussion, it has that vibe, but it doesn't carry like a large, especially cymbals. So, you know, who knows? Maybe there's a way to consider some of those things.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker card. So I will now invite the applicant and his team back to the podium for five minutes to further address the commission on his application.
Thanks again. I appreciate you guys taking the time and inviting us back. I think that the information that we heard from the sound study, as we saw, I mean, the interpretation of science still has some personality and some subjectivity to it. And if I lived in those houses, I would probably be more subjective than objective. So, you know, I understand where they're at. I think we were just talking amongst ourselves, and I think Rob brought up a good point, is a live band different than a DJ, different than a celloist? Yes, we all agree there is. Is there a way to find a compromise that we can figure out that we cannot have a live band with percussion? We might be able to have a DJ, we might be able to have live acoustic music that would complement a wedding. And I think, obviously, measuring the sound, having a permanent device to do that, having a person that understands how to read that device and be responsible for that on a daily basis when we have events is pretty important to everybody around here. There's one point I just want to touch on, and I was a little disappointed, because, you know, I'm not the best outreach guy. I mean, you know what? And I'm not sure Jason, he's probably better than me, but maybe not the best. But when we sent those letters about the sound study, we went out and we really tried to reach some people. And I believe that we actually got some very specific neighbors that reached out to us that were here at this event on September 14th that said, "Okay, let's check you out." And so what I heard tonight was, we did nothing. I'd like to say we did something. Maybe we didn't do as much outreach as we should have. But I would also like to share that on the event of the night of the, we did the sound study, I personally was out on the street on Broadway, and the people said that we weren't there we talked to. So I don't want to challenge this. I mean, again, is the expectation met that we did as much as we should have? I'm not going to challenge that. We did what we thought we were given direction to do. We were given direction to complete a sound study, to reach out to the community. We reached out in letters. We sent, and I believe you have a copy of the letter, that we sent to the community indicating that at the reception on October 6th, we were prepared to present the entire sound study. We had it enlarged on a large flip chart, on a large poster board. Anybody that came in could come look at it. We had people standing by to explain it. And again, I don't think there was a lot of interaction in that. There was certainly a lot of interaction on the night of the study. But based upon the information we received, yeah, we made this, you know, we did not have an event planned for October 6th, on September 14th, when we were at this commission meeting. On the 15th, we wanted to move very quickly. We went into action. We obviously contacted a sound specialist. We got them into high gear to do this. We moved quickly. We decided that October 6th would be a date that we could host a community event. But no offense, I'm not pulling out all the stops-- But no offense, I'm not pulling out all the stops and doing some things and not having anybody show up. Yeah, I invited everybody I could. We invited everybody that was in our area. Whether they received, chose, or chose not to attend, I can't control that. I believe that we did the requisite amount of outreach that we were prescribed to do. I believe that we've done all of the technical studies that we were asked to do. I believe that those studies and our behavior suggest that we are no different than any other business in Los Gatos, and that the sound ordinance that applies to others should apply to us, including the live music.
Vice Chair Kane?
The ten-sixth event, was it a Jazz Place event?
It started out as being a community event. We've got probably forty responses from our immediate area, but we really wanted to open it up. So what we did is we went to the Jazz group and invited them.
You invited members of the Jazz Place staff?
And their local community base, yes.
You have any reason I didn't get that memo?
I think you did.
Oh, I don't remember that memo. I have a question about self-monitoring. The courtyard is right below the hotel, and all the guest rooms are, what, three, four flights up? Do you get complaints from those folks about music or noise coming from the courtyard?
No, we don't, because we don't have music in the courtyard.
An event in the courtyard, something that these other people hear. Do people in the hotel hear it?
Absolutely, they hear it. The events that are being referred to at this point might be an outdoor wedding where the actual ceremony is being done without any type of amplified or anything, with no music, with just a minister, or maybe a luncheon. And those events generally, no, we don't get much feedback on, no, we've not had any issues. But, I mean, I think a point was brought up at the last one, is that, you know, we have a responsibility at a two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-dollar price point. We've got to be sensitive to those customers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurney. Commissioner Hudes, followed by Commissioner Birch.
Question for the sound engineer. Some of the testimony that we heard from residents talked about a baseline music level and then conversation on top of that music level. To, what, how many DBs are you, would you add for conversation, you know, at an event? And what would the resulting sound level be?
Generally, face-to-face conversation at a normal level is somewhere around sixty DBA. I mean, we're talking, there could be numerous, you know, maybe fifty, hundred people at these events. You know, it's hard to predict, because are all those people talking at the same time? How loud are they talking? Generally, there will be some crowd noise in there, but we would probably need to do some additional studies to really quantify, in this particular venue, what would crowd noise add to it?
So is that additive, the forty to sixty DBA for conversation?
You know--
Is that, does that, do you take the forty number or the sixty number? Do you add that to the seventy-four or whatever that number is?
No, it's not arithmetic. It's logarithmic, so if you had two--
Right, that's my understanding. So what would that number be?
Two, so let's take two noise sources at sixty DBA. It would be three DBA increase, so the resulting noise level would be sixty-three. You know, at a noise level that we're measuring in here, where you have noise levels in the seventies for the music, you know, we're not, I should also make it clear, I mean, what we did was not necessarily blasting music as loud as we could. So there's obviously going to be some limitations to the amount of noise that we can produce for these neighbors, for the guest rooms. So we did this at, you know, what is a reasonable level that we would expect to want to have the music noise level be at?
Right. If I may, is there a margin that you think might make sense to apply? Because your numbers are right up against the ordinance. You know, when I look at, when I look at your maximum numbers, that gets you to the maximum in the ordinance. And it doesn't account for anything. Is there any reasonable margin, in your opinion as an engineer, that would be something you might make sense to account for other kinds of noise, other than the music that's emanating from one particular place, and you've got the, you know, that's near that sound monitor, but you've got conversation, you know, people enjoying themselves at a wedding going on across that courtyard? Is there a margin that you might think about?
Well, I think that the crowd noise and whatever other noise is generated is essentially in this overall noise level that is being monitored. And so whether it's seventy-four or whether it's sixty-nine, the, whatever the noise level is being generated in the courtyard, you know, that's being shown on the sound level meter, it would be measuring all of the noise. It would be measuring the noise, it would be measuring the crowd noise. It brings up some questions of, how do you tell, you know, do you tell people to quiet down? Is the crowd noise subject to the noise ordinance? In my experience, you know, we deal with this in cities, San Francisco, other cities around the Bay Area, where it's a gray area of whether, is it a free speech thing, where is crowd noise subject to a noise ordinance? Because a lot of noise ordinance are written specifically for certain types of sources, whether it be mechanical equipment, fixed source, amplification, music, anything. So I think that brings in other aspects of it, but I think the important part is that the noise monitoring that would occur is measuring all of the noise that's generated in the courtyard. So if they go over and they see, oh, it's seventy-five on a weekday, or it's seventy on a weekend, well, we're one DB above what we need to be at. So, you know, we need to either reduce the amplified music, which would have some effect on the crowd noise too, just psychologically, or, you know, figure out some way to quiet the noise. I think it's also, you know, reasonable discussions we've had about percussion, cymbals, drum kits, things like that. Certainly, those are things that don't necessarily need amplification and are inherently loud. So, but I think we've shown in this study that a certain degree of amplification can still be compatible with the surrounding community in regards to the noise ordinance.
Commissioner Birch has a question, then I'll go right back to you. Commissioner Hudes? Okay, all right, go ahead and finish up. Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. My question was actually for management. Are, it seems as though there's some ideas that have been put on the table here. It seems as though residents don't feel that there's been as much interaction in the meeting and the outreach. Are you open to having another meeting with the residents to explore options?
Yeah, sure am.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Birch?
In that same vein, as we look at this, if there were some limitations written into this, such as percussion, that was a very good suggestion. To where, when you had customers who were looking at booking various types of music, you would say, sure, but the following are not permitted, such as percussion or whatever. Would you be open to that?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The public testimony portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'll look to the commissioners for questions, comments, and Commissioner O'Donnell, you can go first.
I have a question of staff and perhaps the town attorney, whoever feels they wanted to field the question. What kind of ignited this use permit application modification was, I believe, the recent ordinance, as I understand it, passed by the town, basically, I think, saying that downtown entertainment, music, whatever, is a matter of right. Now, it so happens that this particular use is not a matter of right, arguably, only because they have a use permit. In other words, as opposed to everybody else in town who doesn't have a use permit, they can go ahead and have music, and if they violate the town's noise ordinance, they can be cited. So I guess what I'm curious about is, I don't know the extent of our ability. It seems to me that we have jurisdiction and the ability to say, we like the use permit the way it is, or would you accept the modification of the use permit? Personally, I wouldn't like to let go of the use permit. But I guess I'm saying that, because everybody else that doesn't have a use permit is just kind of home free. And the only reason these people have a use permit is because historically, they were there when the town didn't have this brand-new ordinance. So I guess I'm saying, my understanding, and this is the question, they have the use permit, it is not superseded by the new ordinance, and therefore, we can deal with that use permit as we could normally deal with any use permit. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Long question.
Short answer, thank you.
A longer one from an attorney?
Yes.
Oh, it's a longer one? Go ahead.
No. So there's, we have three CUPs with different requirements. The first one is a CUP that might not have anything at all written in about entertainment. The second set we have are those that said, when we adopt an entertainment policy, you will follow that entertainment policy, whatever it was. And those are more of our recent ones that we did, because we saw that we were going to do an entertainment permit. And then the third one is like this one that said, no entertainment. So how we've dealt with all three of those is the CUPs that didn't have any regulation whatsoever about entertainment, then they have to follow our entertainment policy. The ones that had, they have to follow it, they also have to follow it. But the ones that specifically had, for any reason, their CUP has a no entertainment allowed, have to come in for that modification. And this is one of them, because it had that. Even though entertainment policy might allow some businesses to have entertainment, that still allows you to restrict it because of certain issues that you feel should not allow for entertainment. So you still have the ability, even with our entertainment policy, to deny a business the ability to have the entertainment because of other facts and evidence that you take into account.
Just to follow up for one sec. What other facts? In other words, if we're talking about entertainment, are you saying that if we look at the entertainment and believe for some reason that that entertainment noise level, whatever, is unreasonable, then notwithstanding the ordinance, we can say, no, you can't do that?
No, if you're going to allow it, it just has to comply with our noise ordinance. But if you feel that because of the community, because of other issues that are involved, that it just cannot meet its noise requirements based on evidence, then you can deny an entertainment.
So you make a judgment that there's no way these folks can do that, and therefore, I'm going to deny what? What do I have before that I can deny?
You don't allow for the entertainment. You don't allow for the clause to be removed.
So if somebody comes in and wants to open a restaurant or whatever in town, they decide they want to have a, you know, everybody tells us a small group or whatever, we have no evidence one way or the other. Do I understand correctly, the town basically says, unless you have evidence to the contrary, they can go ahead and do it?
Yes.
So the hypothetical you were giving us seems very impractical, because you're saying, if somebody comes before us and we have reason to know they can't comply with the noise ordinance, then we could turn them down?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Kane?
Counselor, how many establishments similar to the Toll House have a CUP that is no, zero, zipzilch entertainment of any kind?
Did you say sixteen or sixteen?
Approximately sixteen CUPs that have a prohibition for it.
And why would, so that I can figure out what's fair, why would those sixteen have no E? And do they have no Es for situations similar to this?
There was a period of time where the condition became standard, that somebody could not have entertainment. So for example, some of those places are like Chipotle, for example, on Los Gatos Boulevard. It was just a standard. They didn't ask for it. We didn't do any findings. We just standard put it in their conditional use permit, because it was a kind of form that we were using. So several restaurants have that provision just as a standard. There was no evidence for or against it, or maybe even an ask for it. Sometimes when somebody doesn't ask for it, then we just use that standard condition and prohibit it.
Back to what Commissioner O'Donnell was saying, it just makes me think of a zero-sum, zero-sum game of some sort. If they did get a CUP number two, which is follow the policy, then the noise ordinance would govern what happens, and if they go above a DB, they're cited, 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 lose it, and they're done. So I'm thinking, I'm asking you, where's the downside to requiring them to do what everybody else has to do, which is supposed to protect the neighborhood with noise? And if they don't, then they lose it. Is that correct?
That's correct. So ultimately, if it became an issue where there were multiple violations, then it could be set for a modification or revocation of the conditional use permit, which is permitted under our town code currently.
So we've put other things on trial basis, and we might not even have to do that in this case, because it's self-contained. If they blow it, they lose it. Thank you.
So not only do we have the requirement in the recommended from staff about using the DBA that they will monitor inside, even with that monitor, let's suppose they monitoring inside and they're within their range, if in fact, from their property line, they're exceeding the DBA in our noise ordinance, they are in violation and will be cited. And so that's also, if you didn't understand that part of it, that's still, it's not just because now they're monitoring inside, they can do whatever they want outside.
My last question is, with respect to that zero sum and the level of DBs that would be violated, would it be practical? Would it be practical, fair and honest, to put them under the liability of that DB and expect them to have the desired result with respect to business? Is there any, is the DB so low that it's not practical? Are we looking at a bigger, you know, does it make any sense to do this in the first place?
That's ultimately a business decision for the Toll House.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
So this is a question, I think, probably for Mr. Schulz. I'm trying to understand how to think about this issue with respect to the new ordinance. And I guess it seems to me, unless I'm missing something, and I frequently do, so I'm open to being educated, why isn't the question simply, should this CUP remain in effect? Or should this CUP be revoked or eliminated, whatever the right word is? And then if it is, then the new ordinance would apply. Why isn't that the simplicity of the question? So what, under what, and I'm trying to understand, under what basis would one be able to modify an existing CUP? Because if you grandfathered existing CUPs, why is there an ability under the ordinance to modify an existing CUP? Understand the question I'm asking?
I'll try. So I think it gets back to the three scenarios that Mr. Schulz expressed earlier. So we have some conditional use permits that don't have any prohibition of entertainment. So they comply with the policy, and they don't have to come through any modification. For ones like the Toll House, they specifically have a condition of approval that states that they cannot have any outdoor music. And so if they want to be able to have the benefit of complying with the new policy, then they have to come through and modify the use permit. I think your initial comments, you know, it is, from a simplistic view, it's either, you know, you express that you want to recommend that they be allowed to modify their conditional use permit, or that they not be allowed to modify their use permit, and the condition remains, and they would not be allowed to have outdoor entertainment. But looking at, I'm assuming that didn't answer the question you were looking at.
Maybe I'm trying to be too simplistic. If in fact, I mean, I don't know on what basis one can, can someone voluntarily give up their CUP?
So this wouldn't be giving up their CUP. You're strictly looking at the provision related to entertainment.
Okay, so--
Voluntarily, if a business goes out of business, and it's out of business for a year, then they lose their CUP.
So we're modifying the CUP for only the portion that relates to entertainment, which then would make the new ordinance apply to them?
They have a specific restriction currently under their conditional use permit that does not allow them--
So the simplistic question then is, do we think they should be allowed-- So the simplistic question then is, do we think they should be allowed to have the right that they would have under the entertainment policy if they were building a new building, or they didn't have something? Or there are some findings that we could find that would suggest to us that we should continue the present restriction that is, puts a larger burden on them than the new ordinance would, in the same way that the town could hypothetically find those same findings on someone who doesn't presently have a conditional use permit that allow, that restricts them from having it?
That's correct.
Okay, got it, finally. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Part of the reason we may be, or I may be, thinking differently about this, one argument goes, you should level the playing field. We've heard that this year, which suggests that these folks are being treated differently and somehow wrongly than others. But listen, listening to your three choices, it seems to me that in fact, whatever everybody else is doing, these folks have a use permit. And we could say, that's your use permit, that's it. Or, and this is solely, I think, the discretion of us tonight and the counsel ultimately, to say, you know, you make an argument that this is hurting your business, and we're sympathetic to that. On the other hand, we're very sympathetic to the neighbors, and we're not comfortable with what the study shows. You could again say, well, we're going to impose a level which is, I guess, and this is the question, lower than the town's limitations. In other words, if you leave it alone, we don't have to worry about the limitations because they can't have outdoor music. If we say, well, we're uncomfortable with just saying no to you, but we don't like the DBA level set in the town, so we're going to set a new and different and lower, the question is, can you do that? I'm not saying we should do that, but I just want to know if you could do that.
So our noise ordinance has standards that have been set, and so, no, I don't think we should change those from the outside. If you feel the ones inside need to be changed per their business that aren't low enough, then that might be where you want, if you need more of a buffer, which I think is what some of the questions Commissioner Hootis was saying. But from an outside, everybody has to comply with the same, whether you're residential, whether you're.
Outside and inside, you mean in the building and outside the building?
Yes. The two, the two inside, what they're going to monitor, and apparently, if it goes over or gets closed, they're going to have to find a way to reduce their sound.
I thought the two monitors were in fact outside, in the outside area.
Outside area, that's outside, but within their property.
That's all we've been talking about tonight.
Right, within their property, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But I would also say that, no, we regulate any noise. I think one of the speakers mentioned that just if there was crowd noise, we would, we can also cite for just crowd noise.
The only reason I ask it is, it seems, gives us with an interesting dilemma. We either say, you know, nothing, we're not going to do anything because we can't control it, doesn't look to us like the neighbors are going to be happy if we simply say, we're going to impose on you, we're not really imposing it, it's already imposed on you, the town ordinance. So if we're between a rock and a hard place on that, it just seems odd to me that you can't say, let's split the baby kind of thing. But you can't, if you can't say, notwithstanding the town's levels here, the neighbors are saying, that's not going to be good for us, so we can say no to everything, or we could impose a lower level, and you say, no, you really couldn't impose, you can impose, you can leave it alone, but you can't come up with your own DBA levels. Is that right? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hootis.
So just to clarify, what I understand, the proposal is on the draft modified conditions. It's to allow entertainment, which is not currently allowed, and to make it subject to the monitoring that's in this report, including C1 and C2 at a internal to the property location, at the specified DBA levels that they will follow at location C1.
So that's correct. And the condition is actually written such that they could choose between C1 or C2 based on, you know, what's feasible. And either one of them would have to follow the noise assessment, which would.
Okay. So coming back to the previous discussion about where we have latitude, it sounds like we don't have latitude to come up with a different DBA level for the neighborhood, but we could come up with a, and in fact, we have proposed a different DBA level for monitoring on the site, and we have flexibility in terms of whether it's the numbers that are in this report, or other numbers if there's, if there are findings that we could make. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
So it would be safe to say that a prior council at some point in time made findings to restrict the entertainment. That being said, we could honor that decision of a prior council and not change anything. We don't know what those findings could be unless they were related to.
That's definitely an option. You can either make a recommendation of approval of the modification, or recommend to the town council denial of the modification, or recommend approval with some further recommendations, I think, you know, before it was discussed, you know, whether percussion and cymbals should be prohibited. And I think Commissioner Erickson gave a great example. I mean, even though with our entertainment policy, that allows for entertainment before 10:00 PM without entertainment permit and after 10:00 PM with, and yet, before 10:00 PM, you have to comply with a noise ordinance, if a new CUP came in for a new restaurant or a new nightclub or anything of that nature, and they want to have entertainment before 10:00 PM, but because of neighborhood compatibility issues or other health and safety issues, you can still deny the entertainment permit. You still have that ability to deny it and not allow it based on, you know, the evidence and the facts from the hearings. And you do that, even though there are many things that we allow, we still, you know, regarding delivery of trucks, regarding all sorts of noise issue that you put conditions on, even though they're not found elsewhere, or might be contrary to whatever ordinance say.
Commissioner Hanson.
Have we ever done something like this where the change to the CUP was done on a trial Because of the sensitivity with the neighborhood, and also the fact that, the way that this would work is that we're supposed to rely on the attenuation from the hotel to any location in the neighborhood. And we heard testimony that temperature and wind could potentially change that. So it could be that the result doesn't turn out the way you want, and the neighbors are going to hear more noise than they wanted to. And so, and I suspect some of those neighbors would get the DB thing on their phones and check it out. But so that if we did it for a temporary amount of time, and we could hear what the results were, and because of the sensitivity, that would certainly be a compromised sort of position.
And you've done that with past, with, it's more of a review period and determination.
So you can do that just for one specific, we've done that for a specific condition on a CUP?
You've had a review hearing.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Since we're measuring essentially onsite, and we're measuring with a monitor which is in the area where the noise will be coming from, it would appear that the wind, temperature, all that stuff will have little or no effect, whereas, the sound leaving the premises will be attenuated by the changes in climate, all that kind of thing. So the measurement then will not be valid if in fact, the conditions are such off-site that as it was testified, it affects the carry of the sound. So I guess, the only reason I say that is, it's very nice to say, why don't we try this for a year, and we're going to measure it onsite? And the answer to me is, because I don't know what it's going to be off-site. If everything's perfect, what's onsite as modulated for off-site, because we did these measurements, should work fine. But rarely is life perfect. So we won't know what it is. And then somebody suggested we put monitors at certain places off-site, and I don't know how complex that gets. But I'm just saying, I don't know how exact a science this is.
So just to note that the project wood or the, you know, business is subject to the noise ordinance, which is looking at, you know, the off-site, how that affects the off-site. It's just that measuring it onsite is supposed to mitigate the off-site, but it's still subject to the noise ordinance.
I can just tell you from my personal experience of having lived in this town for an awful long time, rarely does anybody ever stop loud noises. I live, happened to live right by the high school. And I assure you, there's a lot of violations, I don't care, because they aren't that bad. But I'm just saying, our noise ordinance enforcement is limited by the number of people we have. And so I'm not criticizing staff to say, that's pretty hard, so you really want to make sure you've got a way of doing this without relying on picking up the phone and calling the police department or something. Anyway, that's just off the site, okay.
Commissioner Erickson.
I'm going to try a motion, if that's okay with the chair.
Yes, it's okay with me.
I will move to deny the request for modifying the existing conditional use permit to allow entertainment before 10:00 PM on property zones, C2, et cetera. I do that with some concern about the economic vitality of the downtown, but I would say, this seems to me to be a situation where there are neighborhood compatibility issues and sensitivity issues, since it is located in a particular location in town where there are residences, both individual residences, multi-dwelling residences, that would cause me concern if it were in a location where it was completely commercial. And I would say that would be something I would take into consideration if it was a new establishment that were coming, that were being presented under the entertainment policy. And I think we've had, we have both the wisdom of the council who adopted, who adopted the present CUP, and we've had significant public testimony that would support the conflict with neighborhood compatibility, and we need to be sensitive to that neighborhood compatibility.
I will second that motion. Discussion, Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm going to say two things. One, I agree with the motion, but I like the suggestion that was made, I think, by at least two of the commissioners, that before we deny something, we might allow time, and there was a suggestion made by the people who live in the area, that they weren't, nobody sat down with them, and the suggestion was maybe sitting down with them could produce something. And secondly, I heard from the applicant who said, I think to Commissioner Hootis, that they would be willing to do that. So I guess my only thought is, if, I'm going to vote against the motion, not because I disagree with it, but because I think it may be premature. It may be that if a time is allowed for them to talk to each other, we might get a solution short of telling them no entertainment at all. So I just say that in case anybody else would like to give them some time.
Commissioner Birch, followed by Vice Chair Kane.
I also will not be supporting the motion for a couple of reasons. The sound studies, or the sound levels that were set, were very specific. They were carefully selected. And what we have in front of us, and again, perhaps I just have the benefit of understanding sound studies, maybe unfortunately too well, is that what we have in front of us, a document that proves that those levels can be controlled, and that they can be controlled onsite, and that we can have a secondary off-site monitoring where, as Sally stated, that if it is too loud, there will be a call, it will be checked, it will be, they will be fined, they will be subject to what any other business that would come in and have this entertainment policy associated with their business. I also agree with Commissioner Hootis on the statement that it sounds like perhaps a little bit more work needs to be done within the neighborhood. And I would prefer more to see something that was so well-worked out for the economic vitality, something that I feel can be controlled, be tried out for a period of time. And I would like to see significantly more work between the business and the neighborhood. I would like to see maybe some limitations on the music styles that were in there as we discussed, but it sounds like that was agreeable. So, but before we just make a sweeping no, I just feel that there's some opportunity here to find a good middle ground that would benefit all.
Vice Chair Kane is next.
I will support the motion, and I don't support trial, because I think all of that is internal to what we have in front of us. I would imagine that they've got the smarts to move heaven and earth, to get what you want and to keep it, because if you don't, they'll take it away from you. It's really that simple to me. I like the staff recommendation, I think it's adequate, it covers all points, and if they violate it, they lose it. If they don't violate it, then we've got some economic vitality issues that are good for the town. You know, a function that is desirable. You might offer quarterly dinners, get me? To review how it's going, to review the number of complaints you have or haven't had. As I said earlier, move heaven and earth. But if you end up getting this thing, do all you can to keep it. Because if you don't, they're going to take it away.
Commissioner Hootis, followed by Commissioner Hanson.
One point of clarification for me in terms of where I come down on this, when the original conditional use permit was written, and I am very strong on, you know, supporting the thinking that went in there, was there a noise ordinance in place? And if so, was it, if there was, was it different than what we have today?
There was a noise ordinance, and it probably wasn't much different, if at all, than what we have today. I don't have all of the background, but, you know, this goes back to the alcohol policy that hadn't been modified, and has a provision that discourages entertainment until we get an entertainment policy. We finally, after years of working through that process, come to a policy that was adopted. And so that's why they have been afforded the opportunity to come before the commission, and the commission will be making a recommendation to the council.
So there was a noise ordinance, but there wasn't an entertainment policy?
Correct.
Okay. And just to add my comments, I, you know, I certainly am not comfortable about approving this change at this time. On the other hand, I think there's the possibility of coming to agreement with the neighbors that isn't totally exhausted, and I would rather see that process take its course before denying the request. And specifically, there are three things that I think need to be discussed with the neighbors. A DBA margin to account for sound across the courtyard, potentially reducing the numbers that are in here to account for that. Number two, eliminating percussion instruments. And number three, considering the possibility of making it acoustic instruments only. So I know those are not in the motion, but those are the things that I would like to see explored further.
Commissioner Hanson.
I too don't support the motion for denial. I'm concerned about the neighbors, and I do think that at a minimum, and for good business purposes, that there should be some actual real outreach with only these neighbors to talk about all these issue. And I think this is a very good sound study, but it did have the limitation of when it was done. And also, I think it's fairly complex, and I think it would be a really difficult thing to put this, you know, into an approved CUP and say that the neighbors hadn't had a chance to really digest it. And so I do think that there ought to be a conversation between the applicant and the sound engineer and the neighborhood, so that they could kind of understand the study and understand, you know, what impact it really might have on them, and, you know, how that works. Because, you know, they're just numbers, and they may not have seen this. So I think that if I were to rethink this, I would want to continue it to do that. And the other issue that came to mind is, we had just had our hearing at the General Plan Committee about the North Forty, and so much of the testimony that we got, and granted, there isn't any application that's going to be implemented at this point in time, but the potential for all these businesses in the North Forty that don't have CUPs, and then having downtown not being able to compete with that, and especially a hotel that relies on events to support its business, I feel like there has to be some kind of compromise in there to let them have their business and be competitive with others. So I would be more in favor of doing some kind of continuance to give the applicant a chance to work things out with the neighbors, so that we could come back and hear this again.
All right, so I'm. All right, so I'm about ready to call the question, and I know what the answer's going to be, but I would just like to make the comment that the residential neighborhood pre-existed before the hotel. But I will call the question. All in favor of the motion that Commissioner Erickson made? Aye. Fails. Four to, five to two. All right. Anybody? No? It's getting late. Okay. Vice Chair Kane.
I'd like to try a motion incorporating points that have been made by Commissioner Hudes and myself. I'm going to use the staff format. I make the motion to make recommendation to Town Council to approve CUP application U-16005. I find the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15301 of CEQA, as adopted by the town, which is Exhibit 2. I make the required findings as required by Section 2920190 of the Town Code for granting approval of the CLP, which is also Exhibit 2 to this report, and recommend approval of CUP application U-16005 to Town Council, with the conditions contained in Exhibit 12 attached to this report, and the plans contained in Exhibit 6. Now, if all of that doesn't cover the following, I'd like to add a recommendation, subject to the approval of the Community Development Director, that there be one or two permanent speakers in the neighborhood to increase the ability to monitor the sound, and moreover, to add to the credibility of the study. Because if the neighbors hear loud noises, and the thing inside the courtyard says, "No, it's not that loud," we've got to build some trust here, we've got to build some credibility. So it might be worth the money, the effort, to have one or two out there monitoring that sound, to make sure that the neighbors are respected and are provided for. Also, I want to add what Commissioner Hudes, if you want to help me on this, what he said about the DBA margin, what he said about eliminating percussion, and I'll leave it open, subject to the approval of the Community Development Director, add the requirement that we're talking about acoustic music only, and I'm not sure that's necessary. Okay, I'm going to pull that up. That's out. I'm back to DBA margin and eliminate percussion, because it is what it is. If they go above the DBs, it doesn't matter if it's Mel Tormay or Joe Cannon? Where'd that come from? Or, anyway, the DBs will speak for themselves, they comply or they don't. And I would again say, talk to me later. I mean, buy dinner, do something. There's a lot of unhappy people over here.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a motion. I'm looking for a second. Commissioner Birch?
I will second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Commissioner Hudes?
I appreciate the spirit of moving this forward and of providing some vibrancy in the downtown, but I am not at a point where I can support it yet, because I don't think that the considerations of the neighbors have been taken fully into account. And so, and while I am sympathetic to the appellant, to the applicant, who wants to move the project forward, I think there's some indication that the applicant is actually willing to do another round of discussion with the neighbors, and that potentially that feedback hasn't really come through and hasn't been two-way. So I'm not going to support, I would prefer to see another round of discussion between the neighborhood and the applicant.
Commissioner Birch?
If I may, just as a reminder, obviously, we are not the last word, and this is going to be going in front of Town Council, and your comments would be taken very, very seriously. As far as moving forward, perhaps what we do is, I would ask Commissioner Hudes if he would be comfortable in adding to the motion that proof of outreach, and I mean viable outreach, be provided at the Town Council meeting as part of their consideration of approval.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm not going to support the motion, because there's no reason why we shouldn't send it back and let them talk. Both sides have said they're willing to do it, and we seem to be in a hurry, and they don't seem to be in a hurry. I just can't think of any reason why if people are willing to talk to each other, we shouldn't let them talk to each other. So I will not be supporting the motion.
All right. Commissioner Hanson?
I want to echo the same concern. I think that the applicant and the neighbors need to talk to each other before we send it on.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I need to call the question. So all in favor? Opposed? Fails? And that would be two to four. Two in favor, and that would be Commissioner Birch and Vice Chair Kane, the rest of us opposed, and Commissioner O'Donnell's ready to make a motion.
Really, the third motion that we've talked about. This motion would be simply that we continue this matter to date certain with the request of both the applicant and the neighbors, and I stress it, both sides, it takes two sides, to use the intervening time between now and the date certain, which we haven't selected yet, to see if they can't work out some kind of settlement that can help us. You can see that our hands are not as free as they would like to be. The easiest thing for us to do, but perhaps not the most equitable thing to do, is simply to say no, or yes. I think we can do a lot better than that. At least, I'm hopeful we can. There's no guarantee that either side has to agree on any compromise, but you both have expressed a willingness to do so, to talk about it. So I would, my motion would be that we continue the matter for purposes of these discussions until, what date would the staff suggest?
Well, we don't have a good suggestion. January agendas are already pretty full. Many of those are tentative, but the earliest we could do it would be January 11th.
All right, the date certain would be January 11th.
Commissioner Hudes?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any discussion? I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Vice Chair Kane, did you have your hand up?
I'm waiting for opposed.
Okay. I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes six to one. All right, Mr. Paulson. Since this is a recommendation to the Town Council, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
Given that the Planning Commission continued the item, there are no appeal rights.
Thank you. We will take a 10-minute break and return with six commissioners. Commissioner Birch is excused for the evening. We are back from our break and ready to go. Item number three, 16362 Highlow Road, Architecture and Site Application S-16-011, requesting approval to construct a new single-family residence on property zone R18. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Any disclosures from commissioners? Ms. Panita's not here tonight, so, Mr. Paulson, will you be providing us with the staff report this evening?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. The Planning Commission last reviewed an application on this site in July of this year, which was an appeal of a Development Review Committee approval. At that meeting, the Planning Commission granted the appeal and denied the application. Subsequent to that, the applicant appealed that decision to the Town Council. Town Council considered the application in September of this year, and they granted the appeal and remanded the application back to the Planning Commission to formalize changes offered by the applicant, which generally included retaining one of the existing redwoods in front that was proposed to be removed, obscuring the glass of the second-floor windows on the right elevation, and ensuring that the drainage was correct. The applicants incorporated these changes. Additionally, the Town Council also asked the applicant to consider reducing the square footage of the garage, and to consider reducing the square footage of the cellar. The applicant has reduced the square footage of the cellar by 200 square feet, and has reduced the square footage of the garage by 199 square feet. The Planning Commission should review this application, as they would any application. It's remanded back to the Planning Commission, but this one also has the Town Council direction relating to the previous application. So all of those changes have been made. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the actions outlined in the staff report and approve the project, as was previous with the previous application. Staff determined at the DRC that the application is compliant with the residential design guidelines, and they have also addressed the council direction that was provided in September. And that concludes staff's report, and I'm available to answer questions.
Mr. Paulson, I'm going to refer to Exhibit 6, Page 2. And council remanded the application back to the commission with new information. So item number one of the resolution provides specific instructions. Item number two provides direction that the decision of the council did not constitute a full administrative decision, and that the commission is to further consider the application. So if we are going to further consider the application, can we discuss further bulk, mass, and scale issues, which were the reasons for our original denial, which the council did not find that we erred or abused our discretion to that regard?
So the Planning Commission is free to make the same determination they made last time. If you still have the same concerns, and irrespective of the council direction, you believe it still does not meet the residential design guidelines and/or is not compatible with the neighborhood, the Planning Commission does have the option to deny the application.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Two things on that. One, I believe their discussion of the modifications that the applicant ultimately agreed to did deal with bulk mass and that kind of thing, because they said, for example, make the house smaller, make the basement smaller. So I think, to me at least, that they did speak to that. What they didn't speak to, I think, was, one of the things we talked about was the 225. And they talked about it too at the meeting, we all watched the video of the meeting, and did not decide this on the basis of 225. But it's clear to me what they're asking us to do, and I have no problem with that. But I do want to say that, before I vote on this matter, I would suggest that we need some more guidance on the application of the guideline, it's all it is, 22 and 5, because in this matter, I believe a significant reason we denied it was it didn't satisfy the 22 and 5, and the council didn't deal with that. And so it would be very helpful if the council gave us a little guidance about, clearly, it's not a, it's not binding, but normally you would have reasons why you didn't apply a guideline. And there could be reasons here. But I, since they really didn't, I don't think, not in the motion that was approved, deal with the 225, I just suggest that to the extent that the council next deals with a 225 issue, if they're not satisfied with it, or if they want to give us some guidelines on when we could ignore it, which is what we'd have to do here, I think, I would be appreciative of that.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I watched the hearing, and I read the resolution, but I don't recall them telling the applicant to make the house smaller. What I did hear was that they should make, consider making the cellar smaller, and consider making the garage smaller. But I did not hear, "Make the house smaller." Okay. Any further questions? Vice Chair Kane?
For staff, I watched the Town Council tape as well. Staff provided a report at the beginning of that segment, and did staff, as a conclusion of that report, agree with the Planning Commission decision that was, which precipitated the meeting at Town Council?
Staff always carries forward the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Was it staff's recommendation as well?
It was not staff's recommendation. Staff recommended approval of the project to the Planning Commission.
Was pretty close.
Further questions? Commissioner Hanson, and then back to Vice Chair Kane.
Thank you.
I had the same concern as Commissioner O'Donnell about the council direction, and I did view the entire tape of it. I, it was, it was bound to grant the appeal based on new information, basically, and so I, one of the issues that came up, for example, was the two-story versus one-story issue, and in our previous hearing, one of the big things we relied on was the 225 in the neighborhood, and there was only one other house that was two stories. And so then, my interpretation of that was that the council did not direct us to look at that issue, and so I, you know, I think it's important to understand, you know, what we really should be looking at, and there's people in the audience that may be wanting to speak to that same issue, but council seemed, seemingly, to my, in my mind, gave us specific direction for reasons, including expanded neighborhood, as well as the safety issue on the street, and having not as much footprint in the lots, that a two-story should be allowed. So I, to me, I didn't think that was something we should be discussing. So that's my question, is should we be discussing that?
Well, I think, as I said before, you're free to discuss any of those issues that you discussed previously. Council members did make comments, there was comments related specifically to the 225. There were comments specifically related to the fact that the house next door is two-story, and whether it's in the county or not, that some of them believe that that still is applicable. So then, you know, you take that into consideration, and as you stated, the number of other things with the expanded neighborhood, and the 225 is not a, you know, requirement, rule, it's a guideline, and it's not the endpoint. So there are opportunities laid out in the guidelines that allow you to look at an expanded neighborhood, or take other factors into consideration. So the Planning Commission is free to do that.
Vice Chair Kane?
To support what was said earlier, in terms of the width of this decision corridor, it may not be the three items that were cited by council. I think it includes an emphasis on those three items. What staff has given us on recommendations is the CEQA provision, that's first. The third one is required considerations. The fourth is A&amp;S, which has the three points, I think, in Exhibit 9. But the second one that you've given us for consideration, it says, "Make the finding that the project complies with the residential design guidelines." And I think that that opens it up before the narrow three points that were mentioned. To, if it's of any value, to supplement the discussion on 225, I'm not a Town Council person, and I defer to them, but the document that founded 225 has my name on it, as does Commissioner O'Donnell. We were there when that went down, we walked the streets with the town, town...
With Barbara Specker.
With Barbara Specker, and the town architect, what's his name, consultant? Larry.
Larry Cannon.
Larry Cannon. And that's where, that was the birth of 225. It is the definition of what is an immediate neighborhood. It is not a requirement, but it was intended then, and it should stand now, as a guiding light, to prevent the destruction of neighborhoods. And that's how I see it. It's prevention and protection. It's not an absolute. There are times and places when you don't want to follow a foolish consistency. But as concerns protecting and preserving neighborhoods, and there's a very strong letter we have, that I'll refer to later, that we received from a citizen about neighborhoods being destroyed, and I think that's why 225 is served as well as a guiding light. It's not an axiom, but it's something we just don't want to water down or give up.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's very clear to me that the council could have said, "225 kind of ends the question." They did not. I'm prepared to believe that the council did that deliberately. In other words, for good and sufficient reason in their minds. So I don't want to refight that war. That's why I'm asking for guidance in the future. But the thing I worry about tonight is, if we said, "Well, doggone it, you didn't deal with that issue, so here, we're sending it back up." I think that just wastes everybody's time. So I don't disagree with people that say, "Why didn't we apply the, or why they didn't apply the 225?" But I don't think it's fair to the applicant or the council to do this thing all over again. So anyway, just throw that out.
Any further questions, comments? See none? I will open the public portion of the hearing and invite the applicant and their team to the podium for up to 10 minutes to discuss their application.
Introduce Valley Jalalien.
Hello.
He's a resident of, long resident of Los Gatos. He is the owner and developer, and he asked me to stand with him tonight. My name's Mike Brown. I'm also from Los Gatos. I work for Coldwell Banker in Los Gatos. I'm working with Valley on this new construction project on Highlow Road. I've worked closely with him on another project on Littlefield, and can vouch for his great work ethic and for the care he takes for the neighborhood he builds in. Here's a quick recap of why we're here tonight, not to restate what you got, what's just been said in the last 10 minutes, but just for our sake and your sake, a recap of what's gone on. The property on Highlow was purchased last December 2015, almost one year ago. In January and February, plans were drawn. March and April was spent meeting with the DRC and neighbors, addressing their concerns, and going through several revisions. I was part of a couple of those neighborhood meetings where we invited all the neighbors to come, actually met in my office, and he met on a couple other sites to address concerns and make changes. In May, the DRC fully approved this project. Valley met all the requirements of the town and made sure the neighbors were happy with the proposed home. He was ready to begin the excavation and had scheduled construction materials and a labor force for the next few months. Eight days later, Shannon Susick filed an appeal, and everything came to a halt. Valley and I met quickly with Shannon, and she was willing to meet with us shortly after she filed the appeal to find out if there's anything we could do to make her feel okay with the project. She said there was nothing except for not making it a two-story home. So almost two months later, we were here with all of you in a similar Planning Commission meeting, thinking, hoping that you would support the DRC's approval of this project. Instead, you upheld Shannon's appeal with a six-to-one vote. That decision was so discouraging and confusing to Valley and myself, but I'm kind of new to this process as well. We reexamined the meeting minutes, and then Valley decided to appeal your decision to Town Council, as you know. At the September 20th Town Council meeting, the discussion went on for over two hours. Sounds like most of you reviewed that and saw that. We presented our case showing over 20 examples of two-story homes on Highlow and surrounding streets. We had a rendering of the home and explained to council the many changes we had made. One reason for the length of time was the fact that dozens of neighbors, including ones directly across the street and on each side, came out speaking in support of the project. We then presented to council several possible reasons why we believe you, the Planning Commission, had approved Shannon's appeal. Now, we don't mean to speak for your mind, but here's what we thought a couple of them would be. I don't know if we can put this on. One would be, number one, you did not have a rendering at that meeting when we met with you the first time of the final version of the home to visually see the compatibility of the home to the neighborhood. The appellant painted it as some huge structure that would not fit in. That is just not the case. That rendering was made available to the Town Council, and now you have it in your packet. Number two, you did not have the soils engineer there, as you recall, to answer your concerns regarding the water issues, some that were brought up by the neighbors. The Town Council did. Number three, you were conflicted using the 252 as a governing rule. This issue, as you said, as you guys just talked about, was discussed at length in the Town Council meeting, and as was stated by Town Council member Jensen, 252 was not meant to be a rule, but rather a guideline. Number four, several of you were not including the two-story home next door in the 252 guideline because it resides in county. This was also addressed in the Town Council meeting, and as was stated by Councilman Renee, I think that's how you say it.
Renee.
Thanks. All homes are included in the 252 scenario, including county. So during that council meeting, it sounds like you all had a chance to go through the minutes or review it. Several additional insights were uncovered, including the fact that Highlow is on the course to become a new safe school route, another reason to support two-story homes on that street so that yards can be as large as possible for children to play safely. There was also a brief discussion about the possibility of retaining the neighborhood in its original historic one-level form, but as Councilman Jensen pointed out, it could not happen because the majority of the neighborhood is county. At the close of this two-hour Town Council discussion, a motion was made to grant the appeal and approve the project by Councilman Renee, but it failed with a two-to-three vote. Then another motion was made, which passed unanimously. I'd like to read that motion directly from the minutes. Motion by Councilmember Marsha Jensen to grant the appeal, but remand the matter to Planning Commission per Attachment 6 to formalize those issues that have been raised by the applicant, i.e. retain the trees, screen the windows, ensure that drainage is correct, and consider reducing the size of the cellar and the size of the garage. This was seconded by Mayor Barbara Speckler and approved. During the past few weeks, we've addressed each of these issues and made every change requested by the Town Council, as Mr. Paulson pointed out. One, we've reduced the size of the garage in the cellar, as you can see by the new rendering that's up above you. I think you have it in front of you as well. The first rendering had the garage out to the front, and now you can see the garage has been set back 10 feet. The Town Council requested that we consider reducing the size of the cellar and the garage. To that end, we've amended our plan to include a 200-square-foot reduction in the garage with a visual, visual 10-foot setback from the front and a 200-square-foot reduction in the cellar. The cellar has now been reduced to approximately 1,600 square feet. Number two, retain the two large trees in front and raise the bathroom window and the glass change. As stated in the amendment, we will keep the trees in the front yard to further help with the screening. We'll also be adding new large trees in the front, as you can see in the rendering. We have also made changes to mitigate the neighbors' concerns, raising the bathroom window sill, and we use obscure glass. And number three, ensure that drainage is correct. During the Town Council meeting on September 20th, the soils engineer, Joel Baldwin, was in attendance, as you probably saw, and spoke regarding any soil and water drainage issues, and assured council that any of these water concerns brought up by two neighbors were not founded by facts regarding this project, but stemmed from other factors on their own properties. There are no drainage issues connected to this project. A soils engineer is in attendance with us tonight, if you have any concerns or wish to address him. Finally, may I gently remind commission that it was back in May when the DRC approved this project, and Valley was set to begin construction. I appreciate this process. I appreciate the fact that we get to have neighbors come forward. That's important. But because one individual who does not even live on the street decided she was not happy for whatever reason with this project, we're now six months into wasted time and money. Again, Valley has gone far beyond the required guideline, has now done everything requested of and by the Town Council. As a side note, four homes on Highlow have already been annexed into the city of town, or the town of Los Gatos. Three of those four are two-story. I know you've all had a chance to drive down or walk down Highlow. This is going to be a beautiful craftsman-style home that's completely compatible with the neighborhood. You will hear again tonight many neighbors coming and supporting this home and moving forward with it being built. We're requesting the planning upheld the unanimously passed motion by the Town Council to approve this project, based on the fact that we have addressed every issue attached to that motion. We're prepared to move forward and build this beautiful home. We will still work closely with the neighbors to ensure a successful addition to the street and to the surrounding neighborhood. Thanks.
Mr. Brown, can you fill out a speaker card for me?
Oh, I apologize. Yeah.
You still have time remaining. Otherwise, I'll get to the questions.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
I think, I guess I missed this because it wasn't called out so much in the staff report, but it is in your letter. It's about the reconfiguration of the garage. Could you explain in a little more detail what's happened with the garage, and does that affect the facade of the house?
I think I have my, Darrell, the architect here, can-
Yeah, hi. We kept the roof line of the previous garage. I mean, basically, you can see on Sheet A1, there's a covered porch all the way across the front of the house.
If you could just give me a minute to get to that. So that's Exhibit 9, A1.
Yeah, the plans, A1, the first sheet, the site plan.
Got it.
Can you tell us who you are?
I'm Darrell Fazekas, the architect.
Okay. I don't think I have a card from you either, but go ahead.
So the front of the garage is 36 feet back now, before it was 26 feet back from the front property line. So basically, there's a, the front porch goes all the way across the front of the house to reduce mass and bulk. That puts the garage back in shadow, and that's the 200 square feet we removed from the garage.
I see. So by removing 200 square feet, you've pushed the front of the garage back by 10 feet?
Yes. So then, and that's good because that really, that puts the garage door in shadow, and it keeps the garage so that you barely see it when you drive by.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hansen?
I was wondering what, what method do you use to determine how much to reduce the cellar and/or the garage? And I ask the question because in, I'm looking at the neighborhood compatibility chart that we had before, and the original garage was proposed at 932 square feet, and you proposed to take 200 square feet off of it. The next largest garage in the immediate neighborhood is under 600 square feet, so I just wondered if, in terms of, if our goal is to be compatible with the neighborhood, why we're having a garage that's a good 25% bigger even after you reduced it than the biggest garage in the neighborhood? And then, I don't know about the cellar, but the cellar issue in our meeting as well as the council meeting, our cellar policy is, as you know, is to use the cellar in visible, in lieu of visible mass above ground, and the council didn't direct to reduce the mass over ground, but if you consider the holistic picture, the intent of the cellar policy was clearly that to not have the mass over the ground. So then, if the council gave direction to reduce the cellar, 200 square feet off of 1,800 isn't very much. So I was just wondering what, how you came to those numbers.
Well, the garage is 20 feet wide and 30 feet deep. Most garages are 22 by 22, so it's, it's not that big of a stretch larger. There's some storage area in the back.
So you're saying it's deeper for the storage? Is it a two- or a three-car garage?
It's a two-car garage.
Okay.
So it's two cars wide, and then there's 10 feet of storage in the back.
Could you comment on the cellar as well?
Well, we were, originally, we were submitted with three bedrooms, and now we're down to one bedroom down there, and so it, it seems to, it's expensive to put in a cellar, so it, the 1,600 square foot's a reasonable minimum for that. I mean, there's, there's no sense in putting in a 1,000-square-foot basement.
What was the original need for the cellar? Was it to get additional-
So it's a rec room and a wine cellar, and an extra bedroom.
And how many bedrooms are in the-
Well, we're at one bedroom now. We started out at three.
How many are in the above-ground house?
Four.
Four. So this would be the fifth. Okay, thank you.
I also, I might make a comment on the mass and scale. I think it, you know, you could have taken the garage back from the backside, you would never see it. So we were trying to be very sensitive to the front and the massive scale visually. So taking that garage from the front and pulling it back 10 feet will really, I think, reduce that massive scale look as you're driving down. So even though it's only 200 square feet, we were trying to make the impact visually from the front, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
You know, cellars are typically used for storage, so with such a large garage with this slight reduction that was made, wasn't there a reason that you could have moved that storage area, that you need that extra garage space and use the cellar more appropriately for the storage?
Well, the cellar is completely finished. It's heated, it's habitable area. It's not for storage, the basement, the cellar.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. I will now invite comments from members of the public. I have a number of speaker cards tonight. I will start with Jason Holliday.
My name is Jason Holliday, and I live at 16400 Highlow Row, which is about three houses south of the property in question tonight. I've lived in Los Gatos, grew up here, went to Van Meter, Fisher Junior Highs, well, Los Gatos High School, and I've been living at the property with my wife and two kids for about six years now. We're speaking tonight, my wife is in here in support, 100% of Valley's project. We're very excited about the new kids, new families coming in and moving in onto this guy, onto this street. I've seen the design of the house, and that Valley is proposing, I think it's a beautiful home. I think that is the size appropriately relative, appropriately relative to all of the other two-story homes on Highlow Road. Does not look out at a place, in my opinion, especially when you look up and down, in front and in back. And to me, it does not overpower these existing homes in the neighborhood, including mine. I think if you look up and down the road, you'd agree that actually it is compatible. It's a beautiful home, and it would fit into all the other homes there on the Highlow Road within this neighborhood. I know Valley has consulted with many engineers, architects, landscapers, et cetera, about the design in the basement, the trees for privacy, the drainage of the water, all the issues, all the proposed issues that has been brought up in the many meetings by the neighbors and, and people outside of our neighborhood. I think, I think he has done, he and his team has done a great job to address all of these issues, worked with the neighborhood and neighbors to address each and every one of them, and as you heard previously, he's addressed those. It's not what I wanted to come here and speak about, those particular issues. There was one issue that was mentioned earlier when he was presenting, and this is on the topic of the safety concern along Highlow Road. Growing up in Los Gatos, my friends and I would play in the street from morning till night. We were out there playing ball, playing games, having, having fun, riding bikes, et cetera, and we would be out there all night. We didn't need a backyard. You know, we were out front and playing around and having a great time. Single-story homes at that time, that was fine. We didn't need a backyard to go out and play, we could just be up front, and that was, say, quote-unquote, "normal" to have a ranch-style, a sprawling house, et cetera, and that was fine. Nowadays, as many of you know, traffic around Los Gatos has been increasing. Streets, especially Highlow Road, is rather dangerous. Cars zoom up and down, especially because of the eucalyptus lane at the south end of the street, and cars zoom up and down, and I could see that. I do not want my kids out front, so a two-story home, having the extra space in the backyard so the kids can play, is very important, and it's important to me as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holliday. Next speaker is Sean Carroll.
I am a resident of Los Gatos, lived in town, have owned a home in town since 1995, lived in town since 1987. I live on Shady View Lane, so one street over. I don't necessarily have a problem with older homes, you know, being either remodeled or scraped and redone, but when, in my opinion, it's done purely for profit, as a development, I don't think it really, building purely on size and building, factoring that in, pure equation for what you can get for the final product, I don't, I don't think it fits into the neighborhood that way. I just think it's too big. 5,000 square feet is a lot of space for a home. I just, humbly, I just don't feel that a super McMansion like that belongs in the neighborhood. Now, that's not to say that I don't think a beautiful home should be built there, but I just think it's too big for the neighborhood. That's really all I have to say.
Any questions for the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Carroll, for your comments. Laney Richardson?
My name is Laney Richardson. I'm a 55-year resident, and I went to Dave's Avenue Fisher in Los Gatos High. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak tonight. Like the immediate neighbors on Highlow, I would like to request that you deny the current application and appeal by the developer, and uphold your six-to-one vote made in July due to the proposed home's mass, scale, height, abuse of cellar- due to the proposed home's mass, scale, height, abusive cellar policy, and because it doesn't fit into the immediate neighborhood as defined in our residential guidelines. This developer has made no changes to the above-ground space and is taking up the town's time and resources by trying to maximize his profit at the expense of his immediate neighbors. I own property in the historic district of Almond Grove and in the Lurinconada area, which, like the subject property, is in a county pocket. Some of my neighbors are annexed into the town of Los Gatos, but our lot is still located in the county. We plan to demolish and rebuild in the next year or so, and I have been following this and other recent applications, like the one on Overlook where the Planning Commission denied the application for far less of an intrusion and the Town Council upheld or remanded them back to you. We live next door to a large, single-level craftsman-style home that was demolished, built new, and annexed into the town in 2011. Our neighbors could have built something significantly larger and taller, but due to their concern and respect for the neighbors and to fit in with the look and feel of our neighborhood, they chose to stick with the size and style of the other homes on the street. This home sold last year for $3.5 million. I appreciate and respect not only the Planning Commission and council, but also our guidelines and believe they are part of what makes this town so special. I feel strongly that they should be upheld and our neighborhoods protected. We need to stop allowing these out-of-town developers to come in and maximize their profits to the detriment of the neighbors, many of whom are like me and have lived in this town all of their lives. My husband and I have already decided that when we do scrape and rebuild, instead of planning for a huge basement and a second story to maximize our resale value, we would feel uncomfortable about selfishly blocking our neighbors' view of the mountains or the canyon and so have decided to stick with a single-story home that blends with the other houses on our block. We care about maintaining the feel of our neighborhood. We believe that fitting into the neighborhood and enjoying and getting along with our neighbors is part of what makes living in Los Gatos so enjoyable. Thank you so much for your time and please send this application back and request that the plans be revised with a design that won't impact the neighbors and therefore will not set a new precedent for others who may be waiting in the wings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Questions? Seeing none, thank you. William Schultz. I hope I have that correct.
Just longtime resident of the Bay Area and Los Gatos and Valley had asked me to look at the property to just, you know, unbiased, look at it and see what I thought. And I just, I think it's a great investment. I saw the property before, it was an empty lot, kind of beaten down. I think that, you know, it's great that people are spending the money and investing in Los Gatos. I understand he's made changes and it looks like it fits into the neighborhood and Los Gatos with all the different types of homes that are built and the different sizes. So that's just my opinion.
Questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Jeannie Dredger?
I want to thank all of you for giving me, a county resident, the opportunity to speak before you once again. I live directly behind this proposed large house and as the story poles went up, I saw that I will no longer have any privacy in my yard. The house north of them, that's the two-story, looks right in my yard. This story, these two stories will look right into my living room and the back bedrooms as well as my entire backyard. I will have no privacy. They are suggesting putting fogged windows. What is to prevent the new owners from putting in clear glass? You know, for the people who live next to them in the two-story on the north side, they, I can look right into their upper rooms as well as they look down into my house, too. It's not a pleasant thing to have. So I ask you to uphold your original six-to-one decision to deny the proposed plans. A large, one-story house would provide privacy for me, for the Wagners and the other people that live next to me that are in a one-story house that, they're renters, they're always renters, have been renters since the house was built in the 50s. So I'm just asking for privacy. I know that we're not guaranteed to have a view anymore, but I know the view would be obstructed with a two-story house. I'm asking for privacy. I know other speakers are much more eloquent than I, I'm just coming from the heart.
You're doing fine.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jim Fox.
Good afternoon, thank you for giving us the opportunity to have our say. I'm Jeannie's neighbor across the street from her and I'm here in support for her. My story is, I can see the top of the house, it's not going to have much effect on us as far as a view. But recently having one of the, actually two mansions on either side of us, one back, just one house, but it's still, it is directly into our property. It didn't bother us, we didn't protest anything, we spoke with the owners, everything was fine, and then it was built. That property, their rooms look right into our backyard, we have no privacy. They also have 70-inch TVs that are on almost all night. And that is like a beacon into our yard and into our bedrooms. These are issues I didn't realize and my wife didn't realize when we didn't question the building of the house. They put the house farther away, which was considered of them, and we figured, hey, no problem there because it's closer to Shannon Road. But now we kind of regret our decision to allow that house because we have no privacy, no privacy at all in our backyard and in two of our three bedrooms. So I just wanted to share that with regards to, the two stories do have an effect that you don't realize when they're first doing it. We didn't have a concern until after the fact. Jeannie has a concern now, before the fact. And she can keep her privacy or at least have something to do with it. That's my bid on it. Yes?
You can, okay, your time just finished, the timing was perfect. Commissioner Hudes?
Where do you live?
I live at 16344 Shady View Lane. It's the second house from the end, across the street from where Jeannie lives. And there's two houses, one immediately south of us. The other one is not on Shady View, but it's the next house beyond Shady View.
You're on the east side of Shady View?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the other house is on Shannon. And you'll see this beautiful, beautiful white mansion. Gorgeous. But if you go into our backyard, you'll see what I'm talking about. Look right into their bedrooms and they have the big screen TVs. I actually had to mount a plywood piece up there so it blocked the light from coming into one of our bedrooms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you.
Ihab Youssef?
Good evening, Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Ihab Youssef, I live at 102 Vista Del Prado and I've lived there since 1997 with my wife and two kids. And I just wanted to mention a couple things. So the main reason that I moved to Los Gatos, I previously lived in Los Altos, was that we needed a place to raise the kids, we wanted a bigger backyard. And the two-story home, it wasn't an option for us. And I think you'll find that lots of people in this community really do not only enjoy living in two-story homes, but they appreciate that because, again, it creates more room in the backyard, it allows their kids to have a safe environment to play, as someone already mentioned. A couple things I wanted to point out is that what I've heard tonight and what I heard at the city council meeting last time is that the applicant is trying to do things to mitigate some of the concerns that the neighbors have. And I think that, you know, he's pushed back the garage, he's added the porch, he's reduced the size of the cellar and the garage. He's doing things, putting up trees, obscuring windows, lowering the window sill. And the person that really impressed me last time, he's still here, is a musician that came up and just came out with a different perspective to help people think about a solution that brings everyone together. And so what I'd like to ask here respectfully is that taking away someone's choice to have a two-story home, that's pretty drastic and I don't think that's the right thing. Reducing a two-car garage so that someone has to park out on the street to make it less safe for our kids, that may not be the best decision. So please, just think about a solution, an opportunity to make everyone have a better home here in Los Gatos. Trees can go up, I haven't heard the applicant say he won't do any of that. I mean, there's got to be a way to give privacy to some of the neighbors, but to just say they don't want a two-story house, I'm sorry, I just don't think that's reasonable. And I hope you'll consider some of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Urban? I'm sorry? He had to leave, all right. Bill Wagner?
Good evening, I'm Bill Wagner, my wife Deborah and I live at 16374 High-Low Road. We are the people who live in the one-story house that's immediately south of the applicant's proposed project. We are the neighbors who are significantly impacted by this project. One of our other neighbors talked earlier about traffic and I will definitely second the fact that there's a real traffic issue on High-Low Road. In fact, I've been before this commission in the past to talk exactly about traffic and speed and safety on High-Low Road. But we have a one-story house on a very large lot and we bought in this neighborhood because we had the ability to have a large backyard. We have two daughters that are grown now, but they played in the backyard all the time and the backyard was more than adequate with a large one-story house. About six or eight years ago, a very large two-story house was built on Shady View, more or less behind us, overlooking our backyard. It was built in the county without any residential design guidelines. We're very concerned that approving another two-story house immediately next to us will continue to expand the risk of us just being overwhelmed by two-story houses on all sides. Our focus tonight, however, should be on the residential design guidelines. I know many of you are very involved in the effort of putting those design guidelines together and what their goal is to really set the tone for protecting neighborhoods and protecting the quality of life of neighbors like ourselves. We're very concerned in this case that the guidelines be used properly. This is a picture with some embellishment of the story poles. It shows the size, form, and bulk of the house from our front yard. This is looking directly across our front yard, our house is in the right foreground. This is also the view that you'll see of the side of the house as you drive north on Shannon Road. The renderings from the front are great, but this is the perspective that most drivers will see. With respect to the guidelines, I'm sure you guys all know this much better than we do. There are some specific things that we wanted to call out. This is not just about the 252 rule. There are very specific guidance about the things that are important to be taken care of. And maybe just to move quickly, two-story houses should blend with the smaller homes, avoid bulk and mass at the front and side setback lines, minimize impacts on the streetscape and adjacent neighbors. So there's a lot of other information in the guidelines that really needs to be addressed. The brief closure, the council asked the applicant to, the conversation that the council was about form and mass. The request was to reduce the size of the garage and the basement. I want to point out that the roof line is exactly the same, the above, the second-story mass is exactly the same. So in terms of making the house better comply with the guidelines, we don't think anything very substantive has been done.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And we ask for your denial.
All right, thank you. I have to stop it and be fair to everybody with the same time limit. Any questions? Seeing none. Deborah Wagner? Can staff help?
You can just put the paper directly face-up on there and it will show up, Ms. Wagner.
Hi, thank you for reviewing this project again. We have lived in Los Gatos for 35 years and have invested in the community as unpaid volunteers in three schools, actually four, counting Shannon Nursery School, for 18 years. We've raised our family here and are not going anywhere. This home is our investment. The motion crafted by the Town Council was after continued discussion regarding how to reduce the mass and scale of this proposed developer's construction. Minor changes, pushing the garage door back 10 feet, does not address the size or privacy issues. There are now 11 windows and two doors facing our three bedrooms and two bathrooms affecting our privacy. Before this project, there weren't any invasive windows and no doors at all that would present any foot traffic or activities near our bedrooms. As shown, these additional two-story windows can still view into our bathrooms. They're only 16 feet from my bathroom. There's 11 windows up there. And we only have like, I think, five in our one-story. This is what it looks like from our bathroom. Whether obscured or not, these windows still shine light into our sleeping areas, affecting our privacy and affecting anybody's ability to sleep without disturbance. Also, obscured glass in bedrooms is not normal, so real homeowners can easily replace these windows. The Town Council discussion expanded about ongoing concerns regarding cellar policy, excluding the square footage of basements for the purpose of reducing above-ground mass and scale. Three council members said they were aware of abuses of this cellar policy where people are considering below space as free square footage than still putting above massive McMansions. Mr. Paulson even said that the definitions of this policy were going to be revisited shortly. Ms. Jensen also repeated that cellar policy modifications were going before commission. As the cellar policy is under modification, this house, with the cellar included, is clearly massive at over 6,000 square feet. This type of usage was never the purpose of disallowing square footage in the guidelines in the first place. Mr. Leonardis mentioned that there were two houses on the corner of Shannon and Inglewood as examples of single-stories with cellars in order to maintain compatibility. Can I show this?
Yes, you have 30 seconds remaining.
Oh, okay. The 83-page document was crafted with the intent to ensure that homes are compatible to the neighborhoods and that existing residents are protected for privacy. Why have an 83-page guideline document if it's disregarded? This document is a promise to protect neighborhoods. That's the intent and honorable application of these guidelines. Please honor that intent and uphold your six-to-one July decision by denying this application.
Vice Chair Kane has a question for you.
Could you straighten out that picture and then I do have a question for you.
This is exactly the house that Mr. Leonardis was referring to and it was built with a basement to be respectful of the neighbors and it's selling for $3,400,000 right now.
Okay, thank you. My question is, your letter, your letter and Mr. Wagner's letter, whether the immediate neighborhood is defined by the 252 definition or expanded to include the 14 surrounding houses, all but one are single-story houses. In identifying those 14 houses, are you being selective or are they tangent or are they within a circle?
I don't know because he... I don't know, because he... I know that there's only, from the...
The point I'll try and make is that from Shannon Road down, along Highlow Road, as you move south, of the first 14 houses on Highlow Road, there's only one single story. So, I mean, we've talked about the 225 rule. I think we could almost expand it in this case to be the 337 rule or something like that.
The one that you're accepting, is that the one to the north of the subject property?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Hi, Cindy Schneider, 35-year resident. I want to thank you for your service and caring for our town. I also want to thank you for the decision you made in June for an application in my immediate neighborhood at 252 Prince Street. Like the one before you tonight, a developer had purchased and then rented the property while submitting plans to tear down and build a new home. Like the application before you for the second time tonight, the developer wanted to build a two-story home that was the second-largest home in the immediate neighborhood and the second-two-story home in the predominantly-single-story immediate neighborhood. Your decision in June to deny the application at 252 Prince was well thought out and supported by the town's guidelines and policies, just as your 6-1 decision on July 27th to deny the current application for similar reasons. I ask that you uphold not only the town's guidelines, but that the message you send to the applicant and staff and council is just as strong as your decision on July 27th. This developer has made no, zero changes to the above-grade floor area ratio, nor has he addressed the concerns for views, privacy, and mass and scale. Please deny the current application again and insist the developer design a home that fits into the immediate neighborhood. You and those before you have worked so hard to preserve neighborhoods, protect neighbors, create and uphold our guidelines, and I thank you. But they must be applied equally and with the utmost concern for the actual residents and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. We have a question from Commissioner Hudes.
Yes. Maybe I missed it. Where do you live?
I lived right next to Prince on Matson Avenue. And we're parallel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Perry Hariri. We own a home at 16386 Highlow Road. We are an immediate neighbor. We're one of the 225, two houses to the south. I'm a little confused. All these issues we discussed at council, bulk, mass, and scale, two-story heights, even Ms. Sussex, the original applicant, on the record stated she had no problem with a two-story home at council. Council made a very specific recommendation to approve these with those three specific things. Mr. O'Donnell correctly pointed out that to send it back to discuss the same issues of bulk, mass, and scale would be really an abusive process and actually counter to the recommendations. Specifically with respect to the 225, everything about the surrounding neighborhood was discussed. 14 out of the 29 homes on that street are two stories. In fact, we talked about the policy of that neighborhood. Ms. Jensen talked about 225 was one element. You've got to look at the overall neighborhood. And when you walk down the neighborhood, it's pretty clear that it's a mixed neighborhood. Three out of the four homes on that street are two-story, the only four homes on the street that are in the town, three of them are two stories. So there are only four homes on that street that are in the town, three are two stories. In the greater neighborhood, there are only 10 homes that are in the town, eight are two stories. So there's a precedent of two-story homes being allowed and annexed into this town in that greater neighborhood. We discussed the policy of single-story homes on a large footprint, and in fact, the council said that we want to encourage more green space, bigger yards, less surface runoff, 3,500 square foot on one story takes up a lot more surface area. We talked about the safe routes on that street. Most of the people that reside on that street, the new people that are buying homes, have younger kids. There's four schools within walking distance, there's a park there. We ourselves are 10-year residents with three kids that attend Los Gatos schools, and we like to keep our kids in the backyard playing in the safety of our home. So all of these issues have been discussed. The council made a specific recommendation and remanded to make those three specific things. So if we want to rehash all these, it's just a disrespect to the applicant and everybody else's time here and the council's time and your time. So I think we've got to abide by the council's recommendation, implement the guideline, the changes they required, and execute their recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hariri.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Kirsten Hariri. We live, that was my husband that just spoke, at 16386 Highlow Road. So we are two homes south of Mr. Jalalian's property. I didn't make it to the first planning commission meeting, so I just wanted to speak in reference to the two-story element of this home. When we first moved to Los Gatos, we have three daughters, three young daughters. We lived downtown on Broadway, actually, so it's good to see some of our old neighbors here tonight. We loved it. We lived in a small, single-story home. We had no backyard, but I did not want to leave downtown. We just loved living down here so much. Then the kids were getting bigger and moving around, and we said, okay, we need more space. And then as they get bigger and bigger, the way that our family uses our property, we thought, where can we go that we can have a big backyard? And that's one of the reasons why we moved to this part of town. There's big lots, bigger area to have a backyard. By placing a single-story home on one of these lots, it really leaves you with, it does leave you with some backyard, but, you know, we have to be careful in telling each other how we live, how our families live. My kids, we would love to have a pool, we would love to have soccer goals in the backyard. We have a volleyball net in our tiny little backyard right now. So there's reasons why we want this and reasons why people would want to buy a home that Mr. Jalalian is proposing. So I just don't think, if it's done well, why does it have to be bad? This has gone through the DRC of the town, has their approval, has the support of Larry Cannon. I just don't, I think that just because it's a two-story home, it doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad thing. There's reasons for that. Highlow Road is very busy. We do not want our kids playing out in the front yard, as was mentioned earlier. We would love to have them in the backyard. It's a great place for a lemonade stand. My kids have made tons of money out there because we get a lot of traffic. But those are the reasons for us that we would support a two-story home on this street. And one more thing, when you talk about preserving neighborhoods, I completely respect that and love that you're, admire that that's what you're here to do. If you looked at the town council meeting, which I know all of you did, you'll notice there was a huge amount of support for people that actually live on Highlow Road, on the street, immediate neighbors across the street, to the sides, who really support this house and think that it's a great addition to the neighborhood and not something that is going to destroy the neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hariri.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Edwards, and I live at 16395 Shady View Lane. My family and I have lived there since 2011. My home is two plots to the south and rear of the proposed development. I am here to support my neighbors, specifically the Sussexes, the Warners, the Dreggers, the Foxes, in our opposition to this proposed development on the grounds that the size and scale are not appropriate and that the continued development of such size and scale are, project by project, adversely changing the character and the living environment of our neighborhood. Larger size and scale and uniformity of size now seem to be the development trend in our neighborhood. I was pleased to see at the last planning review for this development that the commission took the view that development was inappropriate because of its size and scale. Unfortunately and disappointingly, the developer seems unwilling to make any significant changes to address the concerns of both this commission and the neighbors. I was also disappointed to see that at the recent appeal to council, no argument was made as to the fault made by this commission in voting down this 6-1. Yet still, it's sent back to this commission for further review. Instead, arguments continue to be made that firstly, because overly-large houses have already been built in the area, precedent is used to continue this development plan. And two, that there is market demand for larger and larger family developments and that this demand takes precedence over sensitive planning and neighbor concerns. In the case of the first argument, I have to declare that my home is one of the properties often used as a precedent to build it big. I live in a 4,000-square-foot house on an 8,000-square-foot plot, built in 2006 in the county. Paradoxically, it is also used as an example of inappropriate development that can occur without consideration for neighborhood and neighbor's concerns. My house is indeed considered by some inappropriate in terms of its size and scale and should never have been allowed to be built so large. Having lived in this street for several years and getting to know my neighbors, I can now understand their views. I also declare that I oppose the size and scale of another proposed development directly by my house on Highlow Road, 16386. The proposal is yet to come before this commission, and I note that the presentation to commission has been delayed by the developer, therefore your decision in regarding size and scale will set a planning precedent. My request to this commission is to continue to follow the direction set the last time this development was considered. It is refreshing to see the commission recognizing that developments in the neighborhood is being pushed through house by house, precedent by precedent, and the character of the area has been changed one project at a time. Okay, I'll leave it there.
Mr. Edwards, don't go away. Your 4,000-square-foot home, does it also have a cellar?
No.
And do you have a two-car garage, three-car garage?
Two.
Thank you. Our last speaker card, unless I get more at the last minute, is Lucille Weedman. I see one coming. This is not the last. We'll be here a little later, folks. They keep coming.
Good evening. My name is Lucille Weedman. I live at 215 Carlesse Drive. Thank you for allowing me to express my concerns for the house being proposed at 16362 Highlow Road. In my opinion, the house is too massive for the parcel of land that it will be occupying. If the project is allowed to go forward as planned, it will set a precedent for other homes waiting in the pipeline to be built in the very near future in the Highlow-Shannon neighborhood. Perhaps a positive precedent can be set by requiring the developer to design a more modest-sized home, a one-story home with cellar. This is more in line with the look and feel of the neighborhood that can be replicated by future homes built in the Highlow-Shannon areas. Today, young folks want huge two-story homes, not realizing as they, that as they age and their children leave the nest, they will want to scale down to a one-story, small-family home and still live in Los Gatos. Unfortunately, by then, many of the neighborhoods in Los Gatos will not meet their needs for smaller homes, as there will be few, if any, left. I'm a resident of Los Gatos since 1958, so you can well imagine the tremendous change to our town that I have seen. I know the Highlow-Shannon area rather well, having had schoolmates who lived in the area for many years. It was always a quiet neighborhood with small family homes, and the small portion of Highlow Road that approaches Marchmont was built, was but a small dirt road. Now we are dealing with the concept of, "I can build a house bigger than yours because no one is stopping me," philosophy that is beginning to destroy the quiet charm of our neighborhoods. Modest, single-family homes are being bought up by developers and builders who are creating stucco-and-wood mega-homes, filling a parcel from stem to stern. In county-owned Blossom Hill Manor, many one-story homes are being replaced with truly huge two-story homes and take up just about every bit of the property. Blossom Hill Manor has changed dramatically over just the past 10 years. The homes are huge, and so are the price tags. We are losing our family neighborhoods where children played and neighbors knew each other. I have recently driven and walked through the Highlow area, and to impose such a large two-story house on that modest parcel of land would be the beginning of the end of this lovely neighborhood. If the house is proposed, is in the present state, is allowed to go forward, it will be the death knell for yet another charming Los Gatos neighborhood. We can't afford to lose any more of our neighborhood identities. We are a small, charming county community, excuse me, country community of neighborhoods that should be cherished, not destroyed, with the bigger and better philosophy. Please uphold your original decision to deny the proposed application at 16362 Highlow Road, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weedman. We have a question for you. Don't go away.
Ms. Weedman, thank you for coming down tonight, and thank you for your letter, which you sent to us and which you just read. The one line, you were talking about Blossom Hill Manor and how it has changed dramatically over the past 10 years. You said, "The homes are huge and so are the price tags." You said, you just verbally said, "We're losing our family neighborhoods where the children played and neighbors knew each other." But your letter says, "We are losing our family blue-collar neighborhoods where children played and neighbors knew each other." We have a blue-collar neighborhood on Highlow?
Well, I changed it up because I couldn't speak under three minutes. And I guess when I came to Los Gatos, the communities were blue-collar. When I had friends attending, who lived in that area of Highlow and Robbie Lane and Shannon in that area, it was all blue-collar. And my point being is, we're building homes larger and larger, which is fine, but then when you want to scale down as you get into your 50s or 60s, there aren't going to be any more small, one-family homes, because everything is just getting more and more expensive, and families are going to have to go out of the area as opposed to stay in the area because there's nothing to size down.
Have you been on Highlow since 1958?
No, sir. Carlesse Drive since 1958. But my schoolmates, when we attended University Avenue School, I had a lot of friends that lived in that area, and it was all county. It was all open. It's not like it is now. The homes are humongous compared to what they were when I grew up in the area.
I thank you, and I thank you for your letter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. Sandy Decker. The residential guidelines make the most convincing argument for the incompatibility of this application. The guidelines warn in the introduction that as change occurs, it should be in a manner that is respectful to the scale, texture, and character of the individual neighborhoods and their unique natural setting. This application is in direct opposition to what the residential guidelines are asking. This house shows no relation to this predominantly-single-story neighborhood. It doesn't even attempt to make a sensitive transition. Instead, it proposes a home so out of context that it creates its own anomaly. The cellar in this home is larger than 30% of the homes on the street. The guideline purpose, Section 1.2, states clearly that new development must ensure that it is compatible with its surrounding neighborhood. This application introduces bulk and mass that dwarfs the fabric of the surrounding homes. In Section 1.4 of the guidelines' community expectations, it states unequivocally that the new homes will respect the scale and character of the immediate neighborhoods. This would suggest that the homes introduced in the neighborhood would be in a transitional range, not to go from 1,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet in living space, which is what this house is designed to do. In Section 1.6, the general design principles, the following principles have been used in the development of these guidelines and will be used by the town to evaluate plans and... and design. Number one, encourage consistency with the neighborhood context. Number two, design to blend in, not stand out. Number three, reinforce prevailing neighborhood patterns. Number five, avoid garages and carports that dominate street frontage. Number six, relate the structure's size and bulk to those of the immediate neighborhood. Our community has made dramatic strides lately to ensure that the people in our town are heard and their voice is valued. This is an opportunity in this current political climate to assure that the people of this neighborhood are listened to and not disregarded as more and more developers come into this neighborhood to scrape the single-story profile and turn it into a bloated, view-blocking, unaffordable tract of McMansions. I don't think anyone is suggesting that the older homes shouldn't be redesigned, but the message is, follow the rules and keep this neighborhood in its original context, not to allow literally overshadowing the lovely one-story homes in the area. This is what our own residential guidelines were written to prevent. Please uphold them and deny this application.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. Rod Teague, he was here a minute ago. There you are. Playing music out there? Serenades, maybe?
Born here in Los Gatos, lived here most of my life. I love this town. It's very sacred. And obviously, there's a huge trend going on, and as many of you know, I'm the founder of Town Not City, which we have about 3,300 followers in the community, so I hear a lot about developments. And so I did take some time to look at the property, and, you know, there's a lot of good people here, you know, and it's just, I really think, like the music thing, I think it's about finding middle ground. But clearly, in the trend in our history right now, which is such a very sensitive time, you know, we've become the speculative town. It's, we operate in extremes, you know. I was checking out Alberto Way, and, you know, we're going 3X on that, and it just seems that we don't find that sort of middle ground any longer. And I just got through with a remodel on my house, a complete remodel. I live on Johnson Avenue, and my neighbors had a lot to say about my remodel. I have an 8,600 square foot lot, and I ended up keeping my neighbors happy, and I ended up with a 2,100 square foot remodel, which was actually double the size of what was there, almost. But again, I think it's a very sensitive time, and I'm real concerned because it has become speculative, and we know what happens in speculative environments. They inflate, and in my opinion, they tend to degrade community. And so I hope somewhere in there, there's a, you know, a happy medium for the residents and the developer, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Last card, Shannon Susick.
Hi. Did you get your desk item? I apologize, I didn't get that in in time. I don't know if anyone had time to read it. Is this one? No, this is for the TV. Does it work? Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to sit down, just so I'm not blocking anyone. There's been no changes in the above-grade living space since your hearing in July. One of the other developers on the street said that he didn't understand why it was coming back. Oh, you can change it, sorry. Again, but that's because, for several reasons. So the above-grade space hasn't changed. The other things that haven't changed since July 27th is that our residential design guidelines are the same. They're what distinguishes our town, and if we plan and design only to the setbacks and the FAR, then this is what we have. Oh, good, thanks. That's better than, sorry. Well, Marsha Johnson somewhat dismissed the 252 or 225. It was written by several of you, and Mayor Spector and Steve Leonidas agreed, and I would ask you to expand that. And if you make it 464, then 14 immediate homes on Hilo, the 13 are single-story. If you look at the nearest town neighborhood, which the commission didn't consider, Hilo Court, which is a few hundred feet from this application, all single-level homes, all in the town. Here's my poor attempt at coloring in the lines, and this is what I meant. Here's the application. Here's the smaller two-story there, and then these are all single-level homes. Please uphold your decision. There hasn't been changes to the above-grade space, nor has the applicant worked with the immediate neighbors. This is a house on the corner of Shannon and Hilo that just closed escrow and will probably be another application. This is the developer two doors down. They've taken down the story poles, and it's now vacant, but they're waiting. This is another house that just closed escrow. I would ask the commission that if there are neighborhoods in our town that meet all the building requirements, but if this is our only basis for design and planning, then what are you here for? What are we all here for? What is 87 pages of design guidelines for? The bulk and mass do not conform to the immediate neighborhood. The use of the cellar, in addition, is an abuse. It's the same issues, and they're brought back again because they haven't been addressed. Thank you.
All right, we have a question for you. Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you, and I appreciate the information. Unfortunately, I did not have time to read it. I know that we're meant to consider everything that's presented to us, but I have to give it the weight, you know, that I can apply to it, which is not very much, because I had to skim it. So what would you like to see in terms of this? And I want to understand how that, what you would like to see, relates to the residential design guidelines, in your opinion?
Well, I think to blend into the neighborhood and to design for the neighborhood and to follow the guidelines, then I believe that this is an excellent chance to use the cellar policy for what it was originally intended for, which part of that was the hillside, and this is not hillside. But you have that cellar space. You can have a very nicely-designed, single-level above that, and you can have three to four to, I mean, at this point, there's 5,000 square feet of living space. With a cellar and a single level, you could have...
So are you suggesting single level?
Yes, I am, with a cellar. That's what I would suggest.
Okay, and is that something that you raised with council, at the town council meeting?
I don't, can't remember if I did. I did a PowerPoint for that as well, and I believe that I mentioned that in my submission. The other concern and the reason why it's appropriate for some of these other neighbors, even if they don't live on Hilo, is that you're looking at five houses on that street and three of them back to Shady View Lane, that are all in a similar situation, original 1,000, 1,500 square foot or less houses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I now invite the applicant back up for five minutes to further address his application. And I see you have a speaker card for me. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I know it's getting late for everybody, so thank you. This is very important to, especially to Valley. This is our third meeting in this room in the last six months, so we're kind of all going through this. I think it's clear that Mrs. Susick is kind of gathering the troops. We've got a lot of more people from the community coming against this that don't necessarily live on the street. Valley had mentioned to me, Mike, should we get a lot more people to speak in favor of this tonight? And I said, "No, I believe the Commissioners have seen this. They've saw the town council meeting, and they see the neighbor support." I mean, we could have brought in, I could have gathered, gone out, you know, with my network and brought in the 50 more, and we could have been here all night. It wouldn't benefit us. People obviously have different needs, different thoughts about what makes a good home, what makes a good neighborhood. Valley is being painted as this outsider developer, the big bad guy coming in to build these massive homes to get a big profit, and that's extremely unfair to this gentleman who lives in Los Gatos. He's a small developer. He does one home at a time. He does it carefully and thoughtfully. Valley and I walked Hilo when we were thinking about purchasing this property. I know you're all familiar with the street. The one end of Hilo is already being developed. Most of the original homes are gone. Many of those homes are two-story and craftsmen. The end, close to Shannon, where we purchased, as you know, most of those are still original. They're one-story, they're 1,200, 1,400 square foot homes. The home next to the one that we purchased was a two-story home, and I remember we had this conversation, and I said, "Valley, there's a two-story next to you, so the two-story should not be an issue." We talked through this, and I said, "These are all original homes, and this street is in transition. Anyone can see that, as is the town of Los Gatos." So to say that we have to keep, that someone has to buy that and keep that a one-story or in that shape is just not fair. Again, to be clear, we took it to town council. They were very definitive on what they requested us to do, was to reduce the size of the garage and the cellar. You saw that. They didn't ask us to address the bulk and mass or the second story. We did exactly what they asked us to do, and we thought through it carefully, and we thought about pushing the garage back, and he worked with the architect. So town has its requirements. Valley met those, the DRC approved it. Again, this is a man who went thoughtfully through this, hired the architect, he thought he was ready to go. Now we're into this six months, and we still have people getting up here, "We're talking about two-story in this area." I mean, to me, I'm trying to understand this, but it seems, if cellar policy is an issue, if it's being reviewed in the town, that shouldn't be to his expense. The DRC approved what he did. The last home that we sold, that Valley did, had a cellar. It was quite a large home. There were many buyers interested. It sold quickly. Buyers, there are many buyers in today's market who love that, who love to have the option of a cellar. If they didn't, we wouldn't put it, we wouldn't build that type of home, because we're doing it to sell, to bring families into the community. I understand there are neighbors who think it's too large, but we carefully did the craftsman style that's going to fit into the neighborhood. And like I said, there's different buyers, different needs. Obviously, we could be here all night, hearing from those opinions. But Valley is a businessman, but also a kind man. He's a member of the community. He wants to build a beautiful, craftsman-style home that a wonderful family can move into.
You still have time remaining?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something here, that everybody comes up here that they should know better, that the town considers every project carefully, and they have the consultant that they hire. We pay for it dearly to get their decision on that. So this project was approved by Larry Cannon, which is, you know, and which he understands, obviously, all the design guidelines and everything else. So I just wanted to add that, you know, we have respected and followed all the guidelines and reviewed by the town's consultant. So we can't be creating and designing our own, so.
Thank you. Any further comments you'd like to make?
No, I really would like to thank you for your time, and I would like to consider approving this project so we can go forward. This is my livelihood.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
We heard testimony from a couple of residents about privacy issues. The resident directly behind on Shady View and Mr. Wagner, who I believe is on the south side, are these new issues? And what is your plan for addressing privacy issues with these two neighbors? Is it new, and what's the plan?
No, I think with respect to the privacy, the privacy was related to Mrs. Wagner, which we addressed that by, number one, obscuring the windows to make sure they're not really, you know, visible. And then also, we raised the window to the five-foot level so that nobody from eye view, you cannot see through the window to the next door. So we also provided, you know, screening, provided, you know, planting trees, which they objected to that. They said they don't want any trees, but we offered that, you know, to mitigate, you know, that particular, but they refused to have the trees. But we have done the two things that are basically, as far as the Mrs. Dregger property is not directly in front of us, they are actually sitting to the left, to the east of my property, which are the two-story home directly faces them. So, you know, we're not, you know, there is no privacy issue with respect to Mrs. Dregger that I can think of. We have provided, again, putting trees in the back of the property, mature trees, you know, 12 feet, 13 feet, whatever that it takes, to cover that so they don't have issue with the privacy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just have one minor question, and the architect may be the one to speak, I don't know, but in reducing the size of the garage by moving it back 10 feet, you did not move the overhang of the roof, did you?
Well, but I created a porch.
Yeah, I understand. I guess what I'm wondering, and this is not a suggestion, I'm just trying to think this thing through, when you look at the house and you recessed the garage 10 feet, but you leave the overhang out and you put a porch there, I'm wondering if you believe, as an architect, that that reduces the bulk and mass as you...
Oh, yes. This house has one-story elements on all three sides. She showed some of the photos here, where they had the two-story houses that went straight up. We're not doing that. The second floors are recessed five feet back in the front, plus we have five-foot of porch coming out in the front. So we have this nice one-story roof. Each of the sides pull in seven to eight feet, on the left and the right side. And so that's how you reduce mass and bulk by providing a lot of one-story roof element, which is what we did. The house is only 26 feet high. The house next door is 28 feet high. It has straight vertical walls on all four sides. That is not, that's your mass and bulk there. We are anything but mass and bulk. The reason you do the one-story roof element on three sides is so that visually, as you're driving down, that one-story element blends in with the one-story element of the one-story house next door. And the one-story house next door is rather large. It does, it does take up almost all the lot.
Would you remind me of the side setbacks?
What are we, 88, and then 1616?
I mean, on the ground, though, I guess it's, is it eight?
I think we're eight foot on the ground level.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. I'll look to the Commissioners, and Commissioner Hanson had her hand up first for discussion, question, comments, motion.
I had a couple of questions, actually. First was, I just want to understand, I'm reading the text of the appeal, and it says it's, the appeal of the decision, the planning commission denying request to construct a new, single-family resident is granted, and the application is remanded to planning commission to formalize the changes offered by the applicant for tree removal, obscured glass and drainage, and to consider... for tree removal, obscured glass and drainage, and to consider reducing the size of the cellar and the garage. So to me, what does the, what does appeal being granted mean if it's not a quasi-approval?
So in many town ordinances and city ordinances, they specifically spell out when a decision is remanded back to the planning commission, what transpires. Our ordinance doesn't say that. Many times it'll say exactly that it is not a de novo hearing, meaning that it's completely reopened, and it's only specifically to the issues addressed. In this case, though, we don't have any of that in our ordinance. All it says, if it remanded, it's remanded back based on the direction from the council. So in this case, in the way we've handled all of our remands has been, we have looked at it from a de novo standpoint. However, you should give great weight to the decision-making body, and that's the council and what their recommendation was. So you're not limited only to doing that, even though they did grant the appeal. They did remand it back to you to look at the issues and to make your determination, because ultimately, the A&amp;S application has to be approved. And although they granted the appeal, they didn't approve the A&amp;S application.
Okay, I have one more question, if it's okay. This is probably for Joel. Do we know how many the houses on this street are county versus town of Los Gatos? The reason I ask the question is, it goes to the question of neighborhood preservation. If the majority of the houses are in fact county, we don't have a lot of control over neighborhood preservation. So in fact, the county could come in and allow anyone to build a 4,000 or whatever. I don't even know what the rules are, but we know on Shady View that some of these houses are 4,000 square feet and more. So I don't know if that factored into the town council's granting of the appeal or not, but clearly, they looked at the broader neighborhood even beyond the 464. Not, and there's a number of houses that are already two-story. So again, I'm going back to this thing. If a lot of the houses are in the county, what control do we have other than the few parcels that come in front of us? And what's to prevent the rest of the neighborhood going two-story?
Well, I'd say it looks like there's about, in this first section of Hilo, including the subject application, there's, it looks like there's at least four that have completed annexation and either done improvements or have pending improvements like the application before you. We can't control the county. I think, as you heard this evening, on Shady View and some of the other streets, there is a mechanism to stay in the county, not have to be annexed into the town and build to their requirements, which are different than the town's. So that's where you have that ability to have these larger homes. I think one this evening was, you know, the 4,000 square foot house on a 8,000 square foot lot. So they have different regulations. So typically, how this works is, as projects are sold, and if someone wants to demolish the house, then they're, if they're within 300 feet of the town or adjacent to a town boundary, then they have to annex into the town. That's when they come into our process.
Okay, so at the moment, there's four of about 10, is that...
Roughly.
That are...
And I think it's more than 10 on Hilo.
Okay. I think they said there was 25 total, but you said that section of Hilo, so...
There's at least 27, 29, depending. Some of these may be Shannon addresses, not Hilo.
So it's predominantly county?
It's predominantly county, yes.
Vice Chair Kane?
They're predominantly county, but through one mechanism or another, are they not one by one coming into the town? I mean, the town's not giving up any properties to the county. The movement is the county is allowing annexation, or we're interested in annexation, and we're moving for one reason or another to take over those county properties, yes?
The town has an agreement with the county that if it is within 300 feet of a town road or adjacent to a town property, that we will, in fact, annex those if they trigger demolition.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I guess the 300-foot designation, I assume, does not include most of those 27?
It's getting close to piecemealing, but there's, you know, it's, there are certain pockets, especially when you get over to Shady View or even on the other side, the East Lot Chiquita, there's some pockets where you don't hit that boundary. And so that's where some of these may even be able to be demolished and rebuilt and not have to come to the town.
I don't recall the town council mentioning that, but it's also always a concern to me, because the county doesn't seem to care what they build. And to the extent that it's only 300 feet, if somebody wants to go far enough away, they can stay out of the town, is what you're saying.
Correct. And so that's the, getting to the Blossom Manor comment that was made earlier this evening, too. There's large pockets there that are not anywhere near 300 feet.
The other thing, I guess, that I'm concerned with is, I voted with the six saying that this proposal did not meet the 225, and therefore, among other things, the bulk and mass too, but it should be denied. So we did that, went up to the town council, and we all listened to the town discussing it. And there were two veins of thought. There was one motion that, had a motion and a seconder, it failed. But they were talking about things that I have no idea how that pertained to this particular project, but they talked about it, could only get the two votes. Then, the motion that did pass, as you all recall, was when the mayor said, "Well, gosh, there are only these limited restrictions when you can reverse essentially the planning commission." So then she said, "And I think the proposed changes are too minor." And 10 minutes later, those proposed changes somehow changed, and they were now big enough that they could send it back, which is exactly what they did. It does seem to me there's a fairly strong writing on the wall that they have considered the things we considered before and rejected them, you know, because there's no explanation for them ignoring the things they ignored, like bulk and mass, the 225, they just totally ignore those things. So the only thing I'm concerned with is, we can say as a matter of principle, we're standing on the logic we had last time, which you rejected, and we can send this developer around in a circle again, or not. So I guess if this were, as council says, is de novo, but it really isn't de novo unless you're prepared to ignore the fact that the council has already spoken. If it were not de novo, we would address the issues they have raised. Is, yeah, I guess what I'm just saying is, I can understand people standing in principle and saying, bulk and mass is not, doesn't satisfy us, you don't meet the 225, and therefore, we're going to send it back up to you. But I guess if they are fixed in their position, I hope they simply make a decision next time, because this circle thing is kind of not so good.
Well, I'd like to add, in the past, they did make a decision up on the dais, and that would be a home in Surrey Farms. I think it was on Clover Way. And it was a one-story home, and they wanted a metal roof, and it was very dark in color. And we denied the application, and they appealed it, and it went up to council with new information. And it basically was a new application. As far as I was concerned, it was a completely different house. But council, with the new information, approved it, I don't want to say on the spot, but they did not remand it back to the commission. In this case, they did. So it gives me pause that, rather than them just approving this with the little minor tweaks, they want us to reconsider it.
Can we ask council, just, I hear, I agree with what you're saying, but I guess I'm just wondering, is it within their power? Let's assume that we decide against this again today. It's appealed this time, and they say, "Okay, enough of this." They can just make a decision that we're going to approve. We're going to approve the project as it now exists. In other words, basically say, "We don't agree with the planning commission, and we're not doing this again. We're going to, we're going to do what we want to do." They can do that, can't they?
Yes, yes.
So, thank you.
Commissioner Hudes, followed by Vice Chair Kane?
You know, I'm really troubled with the kind of decision that's in front of us, because I was one of the people that was opposed to this development in the first place, because I think it does change the neighborhood. And I do think that it has issues with the neighborhood compatibility and the neighborhood in the guidelines. And I think it has issues with the bulk scale and mass. However, those issues were considered by the council, in my opinion. And I don't believe that the planning commission is an appeals court for the council. And so I think that they have sent it to us, you know, granting the, I'm sorry, denying the request, and have sent it with specific instructions. And so I'm thinking that I need to follow those instructions and not get into areas that the council seems to have already adjudicated in a way maybe I don't agree with, but it seems that they have dealt with those issues and haven't chosen to send those issues back to us. So that's kind of where I'm thinking.
Vice Chair Kane?
Town attorney has said, "De novo. We can look at this from the beginning." It was also mentioned earlier that in the recommendations from staff, it says, "Make the finding that the project complies with the residential design guidelines." It's right there. I'm not going to be able to do that, so we're stuck. Now, what we can hope to do is respectfully, humbly, make a case for what we're going to do with this. We're not sending it back upstairs. The only way we can go back upstairs is if we deny it and it gets appealed. We're not sending it back up. We're going to make a decision. And if it, and if it is denied, and if it is appealed, my intention would be to put a whole lot of numbers from the residential design guidelines and ask, implore town council to uphold those provisions. Those are the guidelines and the standards with which we protect and preserve. And if commissioners are getting the feeling that we're not getting clear guidance from council, then we really need clear guidance from council, because these are our primary, most valuable tools to do what we're supposed to be doing. And I guess on that note, I'm ready to make a motion, unless there's more discussion. Commissioner Hudes?
Commissioner Hanson?
I just had a thought. Supposing that it wasn't a de novo application, and that all we could do is look at the, look at the issues that were mentioned in the, you know, the ordinance from the council with the granting the appeal. What if there was no cellar at all? Because we, I think we all have recognized that this isn't really the intent of the seller policy, and so that would certainly take not countable square footage off, but certainly square footage off of the whole thing. And it would be in the spirit of the direction from council. They said reduce it. It doesn't mean it couldn't be eliminated. Because the council did go through this whole discussion about the two-story thing, and they seemed to be pretty comfortable with that, and that wasn't part of their direction back to us. So I just throw that out as an alternative.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I certainly agree. We all know that the purpose of the seller policy would have to be set. That is not how it's been applied. That is not how it's been applied, obviously. And I guess it seems punitive to me. I mean, if somebody wants to say, as Vice Chair Kane has said, I think what he's saying is absolutely accurate. On the other hand, I think it ignores the reality of the situation. So you can be technically correct and feel good about that. Or, as I feel, that we've got pretty clear direction, and very frankly, they're the bosses, and I'm not. I'm prepared to follow that direction. To cut the 1,600 square foot cellar basement, whatever you want to call it, out, doesn't make me, doesn't satisfy anything for me, because it doesn't reduce the bulk and mass. I have no trouble with somebody saying, "I want to put something underground that is of reasonable size," and he did reduce it. Because that's not our problem in Los Gatos. It isn't that the basements are, you know... So that would, to me, would be a good gesture on our part to try to accomplish something. But I personally feel it might be punitive to the applicant here. And I don't, this is not about punishing the applicant. I would, I'm not going to do it, but I'd rather follow the vice chair's rationale, because I think it's a good rationale. I just don't think, in light of what the council did, it's going to get anywhere. He's absolutely right. Somebody has to appeal. But if I were sitting in the applicant's chair, I'd appeal. Why wouldn't you appeal? We know what the council did before. And all we accomplished then is to make the man pay $2,200 or whatever it is. I don't know what we've accomplished, so.
Commissioner Hudes?
I mean, I like the creative thinking about the cellar, but again, I believe that the council has already addressed the cellar. You know, they, they said, "Consider reducing the size of the cellar." And I think we have to decide, did the applicant actually do that? And so I don't think that's, again, an item that, that I feel like we could get into and say, "No cellar," because I think the council's already addressed that issue.
Vice Chair Kane?
As was mentioned earlier, as council progressed through this case, it was, I think initially, town council, vice mayor said, "There are three reasons we can overturn this." And one is that, the first is that the commission erred or exercised an abuse of authority. And they said, "No, that's not it." The new evidence, I'm not sure that was it. And then they talked about, "Well, these are policy issues." So I'm going to go back to the first one. We did not err. Six of us said, "No." I don't know why we wouldn't do that again. If it's an interpretation on some of our parts that we're being tied into three go-no-go alterations, then we're ignoring town council's advice, we're ignoring the director's advice, that we have the room to look at the case de novo, that we have the room to make or not make the finding that the project complies with residential design guidelines. Now, it's been said, "Why bother sending it back to them?" There's one reason, and that is they will hear our plea to not damage the tools. All we have is language, and a lot of language has been presented to us in writing and at the microphone tonight about provisions of the residential design guidelines that I see as being in jeopardy. And we've got a thing here that says, "Make the finding that it complies..." Well, it doesn't, in my opinion. And I've got sections and sightings almost as thorough as Commissioner Hudes as to why it doesn't. And Commissioner O'Donnell, the reason we're sending it back up is to ask them to reaffirm these standards and guidelines. They may have missed that the first time. You are right, they are our bosses, but we watched the tape, and some of it was light and lively.
Why don't you make the motion?
Yes, Vice Chair Kane, I think you're ready for a motion.
And everything they did was correct, but...
Right. Just like you.
This could be my last evening I... I move to deny the architect aside application S-16011, requesting approval to build a new single-family residence in the property is owned R-18. This is APN 53204082. I can make the required finding for SEQA, but I cannot make the required compliance with residential design guidelines. As we had opined earlier, it's in conflict with a number of provisions in there, many of which were read to us tonight, a bunch of which I have in front of me tonight, but I don't know if it would help or not. We talked about mass and scale and incompatibility and privacy, and over and over. I would cite specifically 1.2, at least the fourth bullet. 1.4, the first point, and the point that says, "Homes will redesign with respect to views, privacy, how to read your neighborhood." The definition of an immediate neighborhood is 225. Now, that is the definition of immediate neighborhood, but it is not a rule. It's a guideline, and that's a terribly important guideline, especially when we talk about a neighborhood that was blue-collar and is being destroyed. And that got my attention, and that's what we're supposed to be here to prevent. My motion is something to that effect. Can I get a second?
Seconded by Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Commissioner Hudes?
A question for the town attorney. In terms of the staff recommendation and a motion and findings, there are four findings listed on... motion and findings, there are four findings listed on page four. Is it necessary to support all of those findings?
Yes.
You have to be able to find all of those, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
There's only three.
I'm sorry, I'm looking on page four.
Of the staff report?
The staff report.
Yeah, three of them are findings. The last one is just approving it, subject to the conditions in them.
Okay, thank you.
I will be supporting the motion. Page 13 of the residential design guidelines specifically states that residential development shall be similar in mass, bulk, and scale to the immediate neighborhood. Shall is a mandatory directive. It's not a suggestion. Even with the directives from council, the garage continues to be approximately 30% larger than those in the immediate neighborhood. The cellar, even though you don't count the square footage, but the cellar, in addition to the house, you've got 5,079 square feet of living area, intensifying the land use, and it's out of character with the immediate neighborhood. So I will be supporting the motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
You know where I, I came down, but I will say this. Since I don't, since I do not disagree with the rationale, if, if I vote in favor of this, which I think I'm going to do, it's only because I do agree with in principle, I don't think practically it's the way to go, but if that's what the majority wants to do, I'd hate to be on the record agreeing with what the council did.
If we don't stand together, we hang separately.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner Hudes, opposed, passes four to two. That it's denied. All right. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
All right. Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us this evening?
Very briefly, at the last council meeting, the town council approved the wine cellar application that the planning commission recommended approval of. And then, it was mentioned earlier, but I'll mention it again, next Thursday at 6:00 PM in these chambers, the general plan committee will meet to discuss, well, to continue the discussion of the suggested amendments to the North Forty specific plan from the town council.
Thank you. I would just, Commissioner Hansen?
Oh, I just, if we were allowed to make comments at the end of the meeting, Commissioner?
Sure, yes, yes.
It's directly related to what the hearing we just had. During the council hearing, this 225 thing, you know, I, I understand why council member Jensen brought it up, because you don't want to always, a, a guideline doesn't always apply to every single situation. But on the other hand, it's the one thing that we've used extensively, and I, I personally was troubled by that, and because if, if it's not that, then what is it? Because we need to be able to tell people what is a neighborhood.
Sorry?
And, and so I, I, I don't, I, I, I don't know if, are we still going to use 225, or do we need to, we were looking at, but, I mean, the question got thrown out there, and it didn't really get answered.
So, you know, it, it is an issue, but I think you really need to look at the language in that 1.6, because I think it's very clear, yes, it uses that 225, but it specifically says, common sense should be used when applying the diagram, the diagram being the 2.55. If in doubt, please consult with your town staff regarding its application. And then it says, the diagram below illustrates the town's interpretation of the immediate neighborhood in standards subdivisions. There are several factors in determining an immediate neighborhood when this diagram may be applicable. So it's, it's not saying nowhere in this that it has to be used every single time. It's just, these factors include, but are not limited to, the location, the visibility of the building, the terrain, all of those things. So you could easily determine 225 is an important in a situation, but council might not, and I think that's what happened here. You felt it was important.
The town council forgot to talk about it, and forgot to tell us about it. So they may have done it, but they kept it to themselves.
It wasn't in, I, I think they talked about it earlier, and Jensen, who made the motion, specifically said she didn't find it applicable in this situation, is the interpretation I was receiving from her.
And as I was viewing it, it wasn't?
Didn't make it into the motion whatsoever.
Yeah, I just, the guidance we want is to say, when, sure, we could have decided in the first instance that it didn't apply. We didn't do that. Therefore, we decided it did apply. And if the council disagreed, that's fine, except it would be very helpful to us if they said, it doesn't apply here because, because I guess my intention is to continue to apply 225 till told otherwise, or until we decide. There's some unique facts here that would say, don't apply, and we'll talk about it. And if we all agree, or enough of us agree, we won't. But I'm just saying, if it goes up, and I think it will, it would be very helpful if the council was a little clearer on why 225 didn't apply here.
To this specific one.
To this specific one, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would echo that and say that I think it'd be helpful for maybe staff to, to give us a little bit of maybe discussion about that in, in the future. Nevertheless, the decision on this particular case will have no bearing on other cases that come before me, where I will apply those guidelines in a strong way, and, and, and vote on that, on that basis.
All right. Any, any further comments?
Only to say that it wasn't all about 225. I, I quoted a number of other points in the residential design guidelines, the introduction, the purchase, the purpose. There's a piece in there that says, these guidelines are intended to improve predictability on the part of the community and the building.
We closed the hearing on that. We were just talking in general, so let's not go to the specific project.
All right. I would just like to make the comment. I'll remind the commissioners that we will not be meeting again until mid-December. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody. December 14th and December 15th. So you have a month, you can take some cruises. This meeting's adjourned.